Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zelinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Crowe Kramer's been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this point? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We've got great music tonight. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by Mayor Tim Hannah and I've got everyone's name. We have Ben and we have Karen Harkness. I would get it eventually here this evening. Tim?
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. Don't want to take up too much of your time. So, here to talk about the Exhibition Center, the proposed Exhibition Center in downtown Appleton. So, I want to take just a couple of minutes and give you a little history, talk about the benefits, and talk about why we might be here in Manassia to talk about this this evening. You know, we have a history here in the Fox Cities of projects like this. We tend to talk about these for about 20 years before we actually get them done. So, things like the Tri-County Expressway, who can remember when that was just? How long did we talk about that until it finally happened? A Performing Arts Center was talked about for a long time, and it finally happened. Well, this is one of those projects. It's been hashed over and talked about for a long time, and we are very, very close to making it a reality. There have been several studies that had been done over the years, and I want to emphasize that those studies were not done by the City of Appleton. They were done by the Chamber of Commerce, Fox Cities Chamber of Commerce, and the most recent ones, they partnered with the Fox Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the studies asked the question, "Does an Exhibition Center in the Fox Cities make sense for us?" And the due diligence really went so far as to say, "We want to know what the answer is, and if the answer is no, we want to know that the answer is no." We do not want to hire somebody to do a study for us to tell us what they think we want to hear. And so feasibility study was done. It was done by Convention, Sports, and Leisure out of Minneapolis who specializes in this field, and they came back and they said, "Yes, it does make sense. An Exhibition Center makes sense for the Fox Cities." The next question is, okay, if it makes sense economically for our market, where should it be? And a number of sites were looked at. There were a lot of discussions back and forth. Maybe it should be closer to the highway where more people could access it. Maybe it should be on the water. And then several sites were looked at. But the consultant came back and said, "If you're going to do this and you're going to maximize the benefit for the region, it needs to be right next to the convention hotel that you already have," which is the Radisson Paper Valley. Radisson Paper Valley has 350 rooms, and it is the headquarters for a number of conventions that already come to the Fox Cities on a regular basis. So, when we looked at the possibility of situating an Exhibition Center close to the, I think the consultant's words were, "within spitting distance of the hotel," the obvious site was just behind the Radisson Paper Valley on a parking lot that is currently owned by Outagame County. That parking lot was, used to be Saint Joseph's School. When I was growing up, it was Saint Joe's Great School. Later became Saint Joseph's Middle School when the ACES Network was formed. And they moved out, you know, only in the Fox Cities, right? The Catholic middle school moves into the Lutheran high school, and the Lutheran high school builds a new high school. If they can only do that in the Middle East, you know, when you all have world peace. So, it had left that old building vacant. The county bought it, tore it down, and put a surface lot there for their parking needs. So, the City of Appleton became involved with the Exhibition Center. We negotiated with the county to purchase that piece of property expressly for the building of an Exhibition Center. We reached an agreement. The agreement calls for the city to pay the county a little over $2 million. Now, being honest, the site is not worth $2 million, but the site was not on the market. It was not for sale. There was no motivation for the county to sell it other than for this reason. So, the whole, the push behind the agreement was make the county whole for the cost that they've incurred by owning and tearing down the building and putting that surface lot in. So, that $2 million basically makes them whole. We then have further agreement with the county to replace the parking that they will lose, and we're going to do that primarily through designated on-street parking around their campus. That, I suspect, and you've all read the goings-on in Outagame County, talking about their space needs, and we've pledged to work with them on a more long-term solution for parking. But we will replace those 103 stalls that they're losing. So, there's two contingencies on that agreement. The contingencies are, they will sell us the land. We have to reach an agreement with the owners of the hotel to manage the Exhibition Center. And number two, we have to have agreement by all municipalities in the Fox Cities that collect room tax to increase the room tax to support the capital construction of the Exhibition Center. That's why we're here tonight. You've started collecting room tax. Good for you guys. And so, I just want to talk about some of the benefits. You have a pretty thick package in front of you. This has a lot of the history. It's got the feasibility studies. It's got a number of items in here. I don't expect you to go through it, but if you have questions, you'll be able to find the answers in here. If you don't want to dig through, feel free to contact us. We will absolutely help you find the answers to your questions. So, one of the questions that I've had, and I've visited all the municipalities a couple times to bring them up to date and to talk about the expectations and fill them in on the project, one of the questions is, "What's in it for us?" So, what's in it? What's in it for Manassia? Appleton is obviously going to benefit. Appleton is investing just under $4 million. So, we've got the cost of the land. We've got infrastructure. We've got our legal costs leading up to this, some of the soft costs. So, just under $4 million is the City of Appleton's investment. So, the other surrounding communities, common question is, "What's in it for us?" And I guess I want to, when I thought about the answer to that question, the answer really is, what's in it for you is really up to you. The goal of building an Exhibition Center, the feasibility and the updated feasibility says we can expect about $6.5 million of economic impact annually if we build the Exhibition Center. That's over and above what we have today. The goal of building the Exhibition Center is to bring more people more often into our community. And I use that word "community" purposely. Our community is all of us together. We share this local economy. What happens in Manassia affects us in Appleton. What happens in Appleton affects Manassia. When you do well, we do well, and when we do well, you do well. And I have to say, and I've said this to the mayor, I'm really impressed with what's going on in Manassia. A little bit jealous, but good for you. I'm happy for you. I love downtown Manassia. It's a fun place to come. It's an opportunity for you to show that off to more people. We are in competition today, not Appleton and Manassia, the Fox Cities and the rest of the world. You've seen it. It has just kind of exploded, this talk about talent, right? There are lots of news articles recently about lots of job openings. People are hiring. Hard to find people. And that's a challenge for us to work on together. One of the ways we do that is we make this place, the Fox Cities, an attractive place, number one, to first visit and explore and pique people's interest in coming here and living here and bringing jobs here or creating jobs here. That helps all of us, and Exhibition Center can help us do that. So, one of the questions that I also get from other communities is, "What kind of risk is there?" So, and that's a legitimate question. So, let me answer that directly. For any of the communities, including Appleton, when you pledge room tax, there is no risk to your general fund, to your credit rating, to your general obligation borrowing. There's no risk when you pledge a room tax. So, room tax revenue, it will be financed by a revenue bond. The construction of the facility would be financed by a revenue bond, and the pledge for that bond, our room tax revenues collected throughout the Fox Cities. We have one of those bonds in place right now supporting the Performing Arts Center. Performing Arts Center, there is a, there was a 2% room tax increase amongst all the communities, and that leveraged, at that time in 2001, just over $8 million to help construct the Performing Arts Center. I think you'll be amazed when I tell you how much a 2% increase in room tax will leverage today. That will tell you just how well we've done in terms of increasing the number of people coming to our community and also the rate of the rooms. So, some of the next steps. The facility has been, I mean, the concept for the facility or the program for the facility has been done. That was done through a grant from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. When I say "program," we know how big the facility needs to be. We know how big the exhibition space itself needs to be. We know that. What we don't know is, we don't know, we don't have the final design, and hence, we do not have the final cost of the building. We know it's going to be about 65,000 square feet. The exhibition space will be about 33,000 square feet, and it'll be divisible into three 11,000 square foot areas. But the big floor space will be 30,000 square feet if it's used all at once. That much we know. So, in order to know how much room tax it will take to build the facility, we have to know how much the facility will cost. In order to know what the facility will cost, we have to go through the design process. Oh, what did I forget? The last contingency on the sale of the land. We have to have the intergovernmental agreement with all the other communities. We have to have the management agreement. Oh, and we need to close by the end of November. Okay. So, we've been pushing hard to get there. What we won't know by the end of November is, how much will it cost? We don't have time to go through a design phase, and it's kind of a catch-22. In order to reach the final design and the final cost, we're going to have to spend probably over $1 million to do that. Why would we risk $1 million if we don't know we have the support to build it? How are we going to get the support to build it if we don't know how much it's going to cost? Hence, the catch-22. So, what we've done is, we've talked about and proposed a process by which we get to that answer. And we've gone around and visited the communities and here tonight to talk about that process. The process we're going to use is a, is a process whereby we will hire a construction manager to manage the project, understand that it will be a publicly-owned building, so it needs to be publicly bid. We hire a construction manager. We hire an architect. They work hand-in-hand. They value-engineer the building so that we can get to the final design, and that final design will get us to a cost. That final design, then, will be put out for public bid. I don't know if you've kept up with this project. There have been some things in the past that have said, "Well, it's going to go to a certain contractor here in the valley." It's not. It will be publicly bid, and we'll take the lowest bid as is required by law. So, we have Karen Harkness, who's our Director of Community Development, and Ben LaFrambois, who's from Henchall Culberson. Henchall Culberson is the legal firm that we've hired to help us through this process. One of Ben's colleagues is really an analyst, a financial analyst, and he's put together a very detailed spreadsheet with a number of variables that when, depending upon the variables, will help us predict what a room tax increase would be, would be needed based on various, various cost scenarios. All right? So, we have a grid here that we will hand out to you, and it's got three different scenarios on there. It's got 21 million, 24 million, 27 million. Does it have 30?
30.
Okay. It's the same one we had, right? With what?
Yeah, we updated this one.
Got it. All right.
And Mayor Marcus has those.
All right. So, when you have time, you can look at these, but there are certain variables that we punched in, and we believe, based on our best knowledge and looking at other facilities around the country that are similar in size, similar in market, that we're going to come in that mid-20 million range. So, 24 to 27 million is kind of, we've got it narrowed down into that, into that range. So, that, that range of cost with various scenarios would take just over a 2% increase in the room tax, so probably more like 2.5% to 2.75% increase in room tax to support a capital project of 24 to 27 million dollars. Now, remember what I said, $2 million leveraged back in 2001? It leveraged about $8 million. Today, we're talking 2 million will leverage just about 20 million. So, a little over 2% should get us to where we need to get to. So, how are we going to get this done if we don't know what it's going to cost, and we have to close on the land, and we have to have these agreements done? We're in the process of finalizing agreements that don't necessarily talk about a specific rate. It talks about a range of rates. So, you will see in the matter of the next two or three weeks, an inter, a proposed intergovernmental agreement that has a range in. And what we're asking you to do is to let us go through the process so that we can get that cost, and when we get that cost, we use the model that we've developed to hone in on what that rate is to leverage the money that we need to build this facility. There is a couple wrinkles in here that I want you to understand. One is, I think, right now, you're collecting 5% room tax. Is that correct? Okay, so 3% is going to the Convention Visitors Bureau. Actually, all five is going to them right now, right? Because you were not original signers on the Performing Arts Center, and I appreciate the effort to try to contribute that to the Performing Arts Center and pay off those bonds. But right now, you're at five. That 2% that was added in 2001 to support the bonds for the Performing Arts Center, that was a 20-year bond issue. That bond, right now, it's predicted will be paid off in 2017. We actually think there's a chance it could be paid off next year. When those are paid off, that 2% goes away. So, for the same room tax you're leveraging today with just a slight increase, we can leverage the room tax we're collecting in the Fox Cities and build ourselves an Exhibition Center that could lead to economic benefit for the whole region. So, we're not talking about a huge change in room tax, a net, a huge net change in room tax. So, it's about the best I can do in about 20 or 23 minutes without getting into a whole lot of detail. The whole lot of detail's in that book in front of you, and I hope you can tell, we've done a lot of due diligence on this project. We do not take this lightly. We've had, I say by a stroke of luck, we had new owners purchase the Radisson Paper Valley. And again, if you think back over the last several years, the ownership issue of the hotel has really been kind of through the wringer. And I want to, I'll state again publicly, it's not because the hotel was not doing well. The hotel continues to have their best years, year after year. That hotel does very well. The reason it went into receivership was the reason a lot of hotels went into receivership across the country. The recession and the reforms in the banking laws really almost made it impossible for them to, they're financed usually on a shorter-term note with a balloon at the end. That hotel was refinanced in 2007. You all know what happened in 2008. The value of that hotel declined, along with a lot of other real estate value. The value wasn't there when the balloon came due, and nobody was going to pick up that balloon. It was not unique. This happened all across the country. And again, it didn't mean that the hotel was doing badly. That hotel is doing very well. But by a stroke of luck, we have new owners for the hotel. These owners come with a lot of experience. If they were standing in front of you, they would tell you this. Number one, they're business people. Number two, they are real estate people. The niche of real estate they happen to be involved in is hotels. They're hotel, they own a number of hotels across the country. A lot of them similarly placed hotels in similar-sized markets with Exhibition Centers or Convention Centers attached. So, they come with a wealth of experience, and it was very refreshing to sit down across the table with them to start discussing a management agreement. And it took off almost immediately in a direction that I think we didn't expect at first, but was very beneficial, and we quickly reached agreement in all the areas we needed to that, that concerned us. So, we're happy with that arrangement, and we're finalizing the terms of that management agreement between the City of Appleton through our redevelopment authority and the owners of the hotel. So, be happy to answer questions. Anything? Did I leave out anything? Okay. All right.
Does anyone have questions for Mayor Hannah? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Hannah, for being here this evening. I do have a few questions. The first being, could you tell us again exactly what you're asking for at this point?
Nothing tonight. I'm just here, I'm just here to-
Well, nothing tonight, but in November or whenever we get these documents, just-
Right. An intergovernmental agreement that basically says, "We agree to pledge X amount of future room tax collections to support a bond that will go to raise the capital needed to build the Exhibition Center." Okay? That's what you'll see in the course of sometime in the next month.
Okay. So, just the very beginning of the process, the money to support the building?
We're not asking, we're asking you to pledge room tax receipts. Those room tax receipts will be pooled with room tax receipts from across the region, and that is the revenue source to support the bond issue needed to raise the capital to build the building.
Thank you for that. You also mentioned that these things have to be finalized by the end of November?
Correct.
So, and that is without knowing the actual final cost of the building, you're asking us to pledge-
Correct.
-an amount of room tax. So, the question that comes to my mind is, why all of a sudden are we in the crunch? Crunch time?
Well, we've been in a crunch ever since they agreed to the, the county board agreed to sell us the property and then put that date on at the last second. It's actually, when I think about it, it's actually okay because we've worked extremely hard to get to this point. And some people have said, "Well, you're getting so close, why don't you go back to the county board and ask for an extension?" And I said, "Absolutely not. Not right now." We have our foot on the gas. We want to get to that point without having to go back and open up that whole political process. So, if, if we are that close and we get to November and we're pushing against that timeline and we know we're not going to quite make it, then I'll go back. It'll make it a lot harder for the county to say no. The closer we get, the harder it gets to say no. But at this point, we've got our, we've got the accelerator now, and I can honestly tell you, there is not a day that goes by that the three of us aren't working on this project. There is a tremendous amount of detail involved in it, and there's a lot of questions from people. What you'll find in that packet are, we had a session earlier this year where people could submit questions, and we sat in our council chambers for about six hours and answered all those questions. And what you have in there are the questions and then the answers that we provided. So, a lot of the basic questions, a lot of the questions about how much, how much risk is there? There are a lot of consternation at the City of Appleton about the city owning the facility. How much risk is there in ownership? What if the hotel sells in the middle of it? And, you know, what if we're stuck with this? What if it's empty? And you have a lot of those questions. And so, we do our best to answer those questions, and those questions will be answered in a more legal way when the terms of, and that really helped frame the terms of the management agreement with the hotels. You want those questions answered. So, you want to push as much risk onto the operator as possible. So, that, that's really helped us in our negotiations.
Okay. Another question I have is, you're, you're asking for a percentage of the room tax to go towards paying the revenue bond to build the Expo Center. If by chance that room tax wouldn't generate enough revenue to support that bond, is there any risk to us that, or a possibility, that we could be asked to give general funds from our city to help pay those revenue bonds?
Maybe I didn't answer that clearly before. The answer to that is no. And the way that revenue bonds work with the room tax is, the terms of the room tax, the room tax will have, part of the money will go into a reserve. There is a debt ratio coverage that will be required by the bond issuer. So, you've got a couple of backups there, but we all know that room taxes can be cyclical, right? So, the worst-case scenario is, if we're not collecting enough room tax to make the scheduled payments, the term gets extended. And the people that buy the bonds understand that. That's the risk they're taking. Okay? So, they do as much upfront with the terms of the bonds to mitigate that risk, to make sure they're getting the payments that they expect when they expect it. But worst, worst case is if that doesn't happen, the term will get extended. So, I can tell you that, so for instance, the Performing Arts Center bonds, we had never done a room tax issue in the Fox Cities before, and so the debt ratio coverage was pretty high. I think it was 1.2?
It was higher than 1.3.
Yeah, almost 1.4 because it had never been done before. So, the bond purchasers were asking for a lot of coverage on those, on those bonds. Well, reality has shown, we've collected way more room tax than they anticipated, and so hence, they're getting paid off. And so hence, they're getting paid off potentially five years early. So, and that history now gives us a solid foundation with which to go negotiate with bond buyers for better terms for the next bond issuance. So we've got a really good history here.
Okay. Is there any chance that, that we would ever be on the hook for the, the operation and maintenance costs of the Fox Cities Exhibition Center?
No, you won't see any of those terms in any of the agreements that we're asking you to sign. In fact, I have to work really hard to make sure the city of Appleton is not, or is at as little risk as possible for that scenario. But the city of Appleton will be the owner of the facility, and so if anybody would have any risk for that, it would be the city of Appleton. But when the terms of the management agreement come out, people will see that we have done a number of things to reduce or eliminate that risk for us.
Okay. And one last question. I have been following-
Is this your second, is this your second question? No, I'm just kidding.
No. This is just an overarching question.
Sure.
I've been following this project in the news for a long time.
Yeah.
You mentioned that the Fox Cities area is competing for people's money and people's attention and time. And you're also asking us to pledge some room tax dollars towards the building, towards the revenue bond. But at some point, have you, I also noticed in the paper that the first study said $8 million. Another study was done and decreased that to $6 million of potential revenue. And have you thought of such a thing as market saturation? Competition is a good thing, but we also have Green Bay and all of the attractions that they have with the Packers, and Oshkosh has a convention center.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're considering a convention center here.
Absolutely.
So could you tell us your thoughts on that?
I sure will. One of the reasons that the estimate went down is the first study was done pre-recession. The second one was done post-recession in 2010. Okay? That was part of the reason. We were in the middle of the recession in 2010. So you're going to see a little bit, the numbers have decreased. I suspect if we did it again today, we'd see those numbers go back up. In terms of competition, talk about competition. I heard the same argument in the year 2000, when we were talking about building a performing arts center. Oh my gosh, what about the Widener? We have the Widener. Will anybody come here? We now boast one of the top 10 performing arts centers in the country. That's something we should be proud of. And for a couple, and the reason, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, the Widener Center's a nice place, but it's in the wrong place. I had this discussion with Mayor Jaden, who was mayor of Green Bay at the time. And I said, Paul, if the Widener Center was downtown Green Bay, we probably wouldn't be building ours. But it's in the wrong place. So hence, we went ahead. We're doing very well, our performing arts center. And we say that with a lot of humility, right? I've thought about this question, and I say to myself, we are so humble here in the Fox Cities and in the Midwest about what we have. And, and that's okay. Humility is a good thing. It's an attractive quality. But when that humility starts to cross the line into self-doubt, then we've gone too far. We, I say we, the Fox Cities, we have a great product, and we shouldn't be ashamed of it. People love coming here. The feasibility study talks about that. It's one of the reasons that the recommendation was yes, because when they talk to meeting planners and people across the country that plan meetings, and specifically in Wisconsin, they go, oh, we go back to Appleton in a heartbeat. We love Appleton and the Fox Cities. So I'll just give you, okay, one minute. I'll give you a couple advantages we have over Green Bay, all right? Our downtown is more walkable. There are more amenities within walking distance of an exhibition center downtown. It's safer here crime-wise. We compare very favorably. There are a lot of amenities that are close by, performing arts centers across the street. There's shops, there's restaurants, and we've got so much to offer in this whole region. Green Bay has the Packers. Yes, they do. And people who come here routinely drive up to see Lambeau Field. That's great. And they should. And Lambeau Field's going to do a big project. That's good. That's good for the whole region. Because you know what? Some of the people that go there to experience that are going to end up here. They're going to come down here, as long as we talk about ourselves and let them know we're here and what we have to offer. We got a good product.
Thank you, Mayor Hannah.
I'm sorry, Alderman Better? I'm watching Dan press his button.
He's probably honing on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor Hannah, it's a pleasure to have you here. You just brought up a really important point that I was going to talk about when Alderman Nichols mentioned about competition with Green Bay, because when, the PAC was built in Appleton, I'm a person that loved going to Widener Center. And I was skeptical about the PAC, but certainly what you mentioned is rock-solid and true, and probably more than what I anticipated it to be. So that really was a good thing. And so it kind of, that steered me away from the competition perspective of Green Bay or something like that. But I'm still curious about who would be renting these spaces? These are three very large spaces and one very large space, and what's our potential tenants for this space?
The feasibility study addresses that. Like I said, they talked to meeting planners. Actually, we've lost conventions that used to come here that have outgrown our space. And if you've ever been in the Radisson Paper Valley, when there's a convention there, they cram them in. And especially if it's got an exhibition or some kind of displays. I mean, I've seen it where they've had displays in the lobby and down by the pool, and that's not what meeting planners want, especially when there are other sites available that have the space, the exhibition space. There's a lot of conventions now that really depend on those exhibitions to support the cost of the convention. So they bring in vendors, trade shows and things like that to support the meetings and the conferences that they have. There are a number of those groups that expressed an interest to come back to Appleton and the Fox Cities to have their conventions. So that's one of them aggressively going out and recapturing that business, at the same time capturing some new business that we would, that we cannot accommodate today to come here. And then, other uses for the space, you've been around here long enough, you've seen the Business Expo move from venue to venue. I've seen a home and garden show move from vacant building to vacant building, trying to put on a home and garden show. I remember it at the old Treasure Island and then the old Prangway and then the old Kmart, you know? Don't get me started on that. But anyway, moved around just to kind of find a space, now they would have a home. And I think we would see more of those community events and shows also. It predicts that we'll see a number of that. There's actually a number in there that they predict, and I'm going to, I'm not the detail person. These people are the detail person. So do you have a number?
I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but what I did want to add is that the Convention Visitors Bureau has been keeping a list of organizations that wanted to come that can't come because the exhibition space doesn't exist for their needs, and it's gotten to grow to be quite extensive. But in your packet of information or the studies that Mayor Hannah talked about, the original CSL study from 2008, the Convention Community Coalition Study of 2010, and the update of 2013.
You talked about this before, but I just said, people who are really going to be, have a real financial stake in this, they need owners who will help, willing to cover the operating costs, their estimates, their essence, because they know this harm, so are the disconvention services. Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. The management agreement, going back to the risk factor, part of the management agreement is that the owners of the hotel, they've agreed to cover any operating shortfall for the building. So, again, I don't, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but from an operational point of view, the exhibition center should have excess revenues, so it should meet its expenses and have excess revenues. It begs the question, then why doesn't the private sector do this? Well, property taxes alone on an exhibition center or a building of that value are almost three times what the operating budget is. So your property taxes alone are going to be in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. Their operating expenses, they're estimating their operating expenses to be around $200,000 a year to operate it. So that alone makes it not feasible. And then add on top of that, debt service to raise the money to construct it, it just makes, it's, it's just not feasible financially for a private entity to go in and say, yep, we're going to invest in this. The payback is a long, long time, if at all. So, but the operating risk really is borne by the, by the hotel or the operator of the facility.
And just a comment from a person who's born and raised in Appleton and goes to a lot of your, a lot of your festivals downtown and things like that. 100 parking spaces out of downtown is going to hurt a lot.
Well, let me talk about parking.
Even though that's a good problem for you in a way, but to give up 100 parking spaces for the county folks, then it's going to hurt-
It's a great problem, isn't it?
-the traffic down there.
Isn't it a great problem? Let me talk about parking for just a minute. I think a lot of times people assume that the exhibition center's going to add a great big demand for parking. And I argue this. That hotel already hosts big events. Okay? And I can tell, because from my office, if there's cars parked on the top of the ramp that I overlook, I know there's something big going on at the hotel. And that happens maybe once a month or so. So we can accommodate big events at the hotel. In fact, I remember the same issue when we opened the Performing Arts Center. Oh my gosh, you didn't address parking. Are we going to have enough parking? And I'll never forget, the opening night, the first Broadway show, mamma mia, opening night was the same night as the Red Smith banquet at the hotel. The Red Smith banquet, about 1,700 people, opening night is 2,000 people, and guess what? We had plenty of parking. So when we think about the exhibition center, we're not talking about a huge increase in volume, we're talking an increase in frequency. So more people, more often. Now, on top of that, the city just completed a parking study for downtown, because we've got a lot of other projects that we're working on. And so I feel very confident that we've got the information in hand to be able to address that quickly and not have to spend a year doing a study and an analysis. The analysis has been done, and we know where the need may be for parking. So, and the county was included in that. A lot of the other partners in downtown were included in that study. The YMCA, who's agreed to stay downtown, we need to address their parking concerns. There's a couple of parking ramps that are going to have to come down. They're just at the end of their useful life. So we're going to have the opportunity, when those structures get rebuilt, to rebuild them the way those structures are built today, meaning more mixed use and overbuild the parking for the surrounding neighborhoods. We've got a lot of opportunities going forward, but I'm, I'm confident that we have our, we've got our arms around the parking issue. But I appreciate the concern.
That's good.
In fact, the consultant-
I was on a Vic Ferrari a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't park within four blocks of Bellotone.
So here's what the-
All the ramps were full, and there was no place to park.
Yeah, okay. Great problem. So the parking consultant, I mean, kind of facetiously says, you know what? You guys don't have a parking problem, you have a walking problem. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do I have anything, Dan? Okay. I can't tell if yours is on mark.
Just, real quick, Mayor Hannah, thank you for being here. Karen Arkman, thank you for being here. I just have a question on, I think this is great, and, and I'm going sports-related here. My, my son and I were able to, when he was in U-17, I got to play on a pretty good Elite AAU team. Now, two of the biggest tournaments in the country are down in Louisville, Kentucky, which we went to. Huge exposition center. And Vegas, another place where, you know. So my question is, is how would I go about asking someone or who would? Because at those two places, especially those two tournaments, you have all the huge coaches, Coach K, Bo Ryan, Notre Dame, they're all there. I got to shake their hands, talk to them. We have the facility, we have the hotels, put it right downtown Appleton. That would be huge, I think. How is that something that your people or whoever look at is putting sports in there?
Right. We'll talk about sports for a second. The Convention Visitors Bureau, we're fortunate, our CVB does a great job on sports tourism, and it's one of their strengths. We've benefited, we've all benefited tremendously from the tournaments and things they've been able to bring into the, into the region. The exhibition center is not really designed for sports, okay? The CVB has preliminary, I've talked about preliminarily, and hired a consultant to look at a indoor sports facility for the region. And it makes a lot of sense for us. We do well with outdoor sports. We've got a great soccer complex here. We've hosted the regional finals, I think, three times now. And that brings in just a ton of people and families into the region. They spend a lot of money, and that's, that's a really good thing. But we struggle with the indoor sports, and the consultant said you would do well to have a large indoor sports facility. Now, the question is, number one, where should it be located? That's always a question around here, isn't it? And how are we going to pay for it? And so there was some talk early on in the exhibition center project that, well, we need to reserve room tax in case we want to use room tax to build an indoor sports facility. Okay? And like I mentioned before, when the Performing Arts Center bonds get paid off, which is in a relatively short period of time, we're not going to need, we're going to need a relatively small increase in what we're collecting today, which reserves still quite a bit of room tax under the state caps, if that's the route that they decide to go. So there will be capacity to be able to tackle something like that, if it's decided we should do it, and if a location is, is decided on. So it's, it is something that's actively being discussed.
I was looking, I was looking at like, at those two tournaments we were at in Kentucky and Vegas, I mean, they brought in courts.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't designed just for basketball. They, they brought in courts, you know, for the weekend, and then, you know, that was the big, you know, set. And then all, you know, everybody, the big kids around the country and coaches all went there for, and I was just looking at if that would be something, being downtown Appleton, having the mall, just the valley that I think has a lot to offer the kids.
There has been some, there had been some talk in the past about a combined facility. And to be honest with you, they're just, there's, there's not the room on that site. We're going to be pretty tight on that site as it is, and there just isn't room. And then alternative sites that were looked at, I guess the good news is, alternative sites that we looked at are actively being developed or redeveloped today in downtown. So that's a good thing. But I appreciate the thought, and I think just stay tuned, because CVB is really hot on this, on this issue of youth sports and an indoor complex, which would really complete the inventory of facilities that, that we need.
News later this month, I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it looks like we've got all the questions answered for this evening. Thank you for coming this evening, Mayor Hannah.
Good, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We'll be in touch in the next month or so, I would assume.
If you have questions, don't hesitate to give us a call or funnel them through the mayor, whatever. We will do our best to get your answers, okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll take a moment and shuffle everyone around, and the next item on the agenda is the first step in our new city website. Director Stino has a sample of the style tile that she'd like to talk to us a little bit about. We have to get rid of that sunny spot wherever it is.
So while that's coming up, it's just going to take a minute for it to get brighter. Maybe we can just talk about some of the details. I did put together a memo on that explaining this, but this isn't about the content, this isn't about the way our site's going to look overall. What I'm going to show you is not our homepage. It's nothing more than the design elements that will be part of the site. So I'm just going to bring up a picture here. And so basically, when we're working with Revice, so far to date in time, we have an agreement with Revice, who's helping us do the site. We did have in July a couple of days' worth of meetings with the mayor and all of the department heads to talk about the needs of the site and the desires. Revice had the city staff fill out a questionnaire based on the current site, based on the survey we did earlier in 2015, and all the feedback we've gotten back since then for our new site. So what they wanted us to do, the very first step, and they were very adamant that they wanted you to see this on screen as opposed to on paper. I did put something in the packet, but that was just, so you'd have something to go along with a memo. But basically, these would be the design elements or the building blocks of the new site. So obviously, the first one, again, this is not our website, this is not the homepage, it's just the pieces that are going to go into building it. Obviously, everybody knows what our logo looks like. That will be on the site, not necessarily in that spot, but it'll be on the site. The next one, they call the image treatments. That's the way the pictures will look. They, we actually, as a city, are working on some photography and videography citywide, and that would be something. The pictures on the website are very, very important. We want solid, vibrant colors in our website. The verbiage you see here is nothing more than gibberish. It's just to show you how colored text would look on top of a picture. There's none of the opaque or none of the see-through pictures. It would all be the solid colors. So that's how the pictures would be treated across the site. Over here, they call this the iconography, and that would just be the style of the icons that are used throughout the site. All the icons would be identified with words as well, but this would just be something, again, complementing the rest of the site, complementing our logo. When a city has a logo, basically, that's the starting point. It's not necessarily desired to use the exact colors of your logo, but to use complementary colors, which is what they're trying to do, and then the graphics, they believe, easy to read, easy on the eyes, easy to follow. Next, in this section, we have what they call the topography. This is just the way the wording will look. This is the, again, easy on the eyes, best formatting and best format that website readers like to see. Then down here, we have what they call the buttons, the button types. A big button would be something that would be a primary focus of our website. The smaller button would be certainly something that's still important, but not a headline, not something that's, you know, the biggest thing for the city, and then the text would be somewhat smaller. We're not looking at using a lot of colored text, but if there was something that we wanted to stand out just a bit more than regular text, that would be this. This content card is really just, anytime there's going to be pictures on the site with verbiage, this is how they like to put it together. They like to put it together in what they call a storyline or a new story type of picture. So it just kind of blends the picture with the words. And this is probably maybe one of the more important ones. Down here, you have the color palette of what's being used on the site. This yellowish-orange is not the color of our logo, but it's something that would go with the logo. If we were to brand everything the same exact color as our logo, it was not, website developers say that's not desirable. It leaves too many things off the table. That's why this color was selected. This blue also is not the exact color of our website, or of our logo, but just a complementary color, and the orange is as well is a little bit different. I had gotten the color wise and green. Green is very prevalent in our website, or in our logo. Why don't we use that? And the color of green that we're using in our logo is too dark to be complementary to the rest of the colors, which was the reason that wasn't used. So basically, as far as design goes, again, we'll talk about content next time because that'll be the next step of the project, but as far as all of these design elements, the questions become, does the combination of design choices feel like a good direction for the city of Manassia? Yes or no? If not, why not? And does the style tile evoke the correct tone that we want to present to our website visitors?
Does anyone have any questions for Director Stino? As we were talking about this, we talked about a couple of things, very easy to read. We didn't want a lot of scrolling. We wanted things that showed action within our community, that our community is alive and vibrant. We didn't want a bunch of pictures that were just these vacant abandoned spaces, and we wanted to showcase the waterfront a lot. But this is, a lot of this is just, is it easy to read and is it easy to find things? And does it convey that image that we're looking for in the community? Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My biggest concern with a new website design is kind of the layout or design about how people navigate it. And I don't know that ours is that easy to navigate, other than I've been doing it for so long that I can find my way through it, but what have we done as far as design improvements and things like that to help folks make it more simple and easy to navigate, even though I think our folks are more used to the internet now than when we all grew, kind of grew with it. You know, it's the folks that grew up with it understand it a lot better, but there's still a lot of older folks that have it but aren't that proficient with it, and what have we done to make that more simple?
So it's interesting that you should ask that question because those were some of the questions we were targeting in our survey that we did, community-wide, back in March. And you'd be amazed at the number of people that said the design and look and feel of our website is just fine. And I think it's just that reason you just said, everybody's used to it, that's what they're used to seeing. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to hone in on the things that are the most important to our visitors. So if you, this isn't our homepage, but let's just say this picture. So let's just say this is our homepage. The designs today are trying to be as clean and as crisp and as clear as possible, so there won't be a ton of things going on on the homepage. It'll be, you know, maybe across the top, we're looking at something like five main topics that people want to see. Across the bottom, we might be looking at, you know, five quick links that, you know, people want to get to fast. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to hone in on what it is that people want the most out of the website, and what do they come back the most for, and make those the most prevalent items. After that, everything else becomes secondary. So that's something that the website developers are looking at, both from the city of Manassia's perspective, as far as our history on our site, as well as what they know. They've put together thousands and thousands of websites for municipalities, and that is their specialties.
Is our ordinance and code layout going to stay the same as what it is, or are we doing something to help people navigate? You know, people that aren't used to looking up ordinances and codes so that you tell them, you know, that it's an ordinance or a code to help them navigate their way through that better, to find that easier? Are we addressing some of that at all?
The search capabilities will be much better on the new site.
Okay.
Yep, yep, across the entire site. But some of that, we do have to remember, is content, and that will be back in us to, how do we best display that to the community? And, you know, as a group of department heads and staff, we have a pretty good feeling for what people are looking for. Basically, in all of our meetings, one picture is worth a thousand words. And right now, probably the biggest downfall of our current site is we have a lot of words, a lot of text.
Right.
A lot of not searchable, not, you know, somebody can't drill down to where they want to go. So that would be one of the goals of the new site. But with the design, that's only a piece of it. It's the content that we have to take responsibility for as well.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I think the public should be somewhat involved on this. I think we should have a photo submission to the, to the city here and put that out to the community. It's surprising sometimes, the photos that you do see out there. And can you back out on that photo? Can you pull in another photo?
Did you say go out or?
Yeah, out. To get both photos back up, yeah. Now, this top photo, it's really a great photo with the three boats coming through and the bridge and everything, but, you know, the cloudy overcast day doesn't say a lot. Where if you look at the bottom photo, that, you know, you can't beat a blue sky in a photo, and you want to bring that, you want to bring that to it. So, and with Photoshop today, you know, this top photo here could be, a blue sky be put into that, you know, so.
And Director Kyle just reminded me, there's actually somebody that's hired right now to get all four seasons of the city, both photos and video, and those, we believe, will be very important parts of the new site. Unfortunately, we can't wait till those are in to do all of our design, but the pictures will be very easily taken in and changed.
Anytime you involve the community, you get more people going to our sites, and, you know, if you give them a, you know, pages, you know, that they have their name on the photo or something on the website is kind of unique to the community, so I think that's something we should really look at and kind of get a buzz going about the new page coming out. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Stino, Alderman Taylor brought up a good point about the colors, and you and I had a conversation about that on Friday. Could you just let everyone know, including the public, what the website designer recommends for viewing the colors and how it would, it's going to look different than what it is on the screen here?
Sure. I did have a follow-up with the designers today just for that very reason, following our conversation. So it looks pretty good here, but this is on a projection screen that also distorts the image. They believe, the designers believe that the best, the most vibrant view of this would be under a, for some reason, a Mac is the best resolution as far as the colors go. So viewing it in that light would be, make the colors the most vibrant. They also say webpages aren't to be printed, and like I said, they were discouraging me from putting something in the packet. Unfortunately, I know you couldn't make sense of the memo without having that in there, so that's why I included it in there. But the vibrancy of the colors and the final crisp, clear view of the website is very high on their list. Thank you.
The other thing we talked about too is this is fully scalable, so if you're looking at it on your mobile phone or other tablet, it's going to scale. So it's the correct size on the screen that you can actually read the text. It's not just going to shrink it down. So things may move around and do other things as well.
Right, and they call that responsive. So the website will definitely be responsive and adjust to whatever media you're on, or the user's on.
If anyone has any other comments after they think about it a little bit longer, please get back to Director Stino about it. If you have pictures you want to submit, or if the public does, I think we'd be more than happy to look at them. Both of those pictures are pictures I snapped with my cell phone. I went running down to the bridge one day when it was opening and snapped that one and thought, that's a nice picture. And I think you're right, it does need a little bit nicer sky on it, but I think we could get a lot of great pictures from the community as well that we may be able to use, as well as the ones that we have Image Studios working on right now.
And the higher quality, the better as far as pictures go, just because when they're designing the site for the different shapes and sizes, high quality is very important. So the next step in the process--
Real quick, I just think a picture of the mayor's mansion, and there might be appropriate--
The mayor's mansion? Everyone will get a good kick out of the mayor's mansion, won't they? When they see it's 800 square feet. Alderman Stino?
So the next part of the process would then be for the continuation of the website design. They are working on the design right now. What I asked is for them to give me time to show it to you, and then I guess what I would ask you is maybe by the end of this week, if you could get back to me, if there's any, if there's anything we can't live with, we're certainly going to have more kicks at this as far as when the website design comes out and things, but anything we can get pushed out early on and not have to deal with when we're dealing with content would be appreciated. So if there's any comments or anything that we absolutely can't live with on here, if we could know maybe by the end of the week, so we could let the developer know. Then we're looking at within the next four weeks of having our first website design.
Okay, great. We'll start moving forward then, if someone wants to grab the lights. And item three is the minutes to receive and the communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive the minutes and put on file communications , Minutes A through I and Communications J through O, and--
Is there a second? Is a motion a second? Did you have discussion, Alderman?
Yes. Item K, I would like the city attorney to give a brief report on, for the public on this item.
Just looking for the memo that I put in there. This is the City of Cocona et al. versus Village of Harrison et al. case that was at the Court of Appeals, and this is the one concerning that intergovernmental agreement that the village and the town of Harrison entered into. And as part of that intergovernmental agreement, the Village of Harrison moved its boundary from the original incorporation to include all of the rest of the territory within the town, except for those portions that were defined as the growth areas under the agreements that the town of Harrison had with the City of Manassia and City of Appleton. And the appellate court had ruled affirming the trial court's decision that nothing in the statutes actually prohibits the scope of, or the notice to the public of the boundary change that was complained of by the municipal neighbors, and that was the City of Cocona, City of Manassia, and Village of Sherwood.
Were there any other questions or comments on that subject? No, okay. We can go on to you if there was no one else on that item. No, okay. Alderman Zelinski?
Question for item N. Director Stino, equalized value. Was that broke down between Calumet and Winnebago County?
Both counties increased. Calumet went from 211 million to 213 million. I could give you the exact numbers if you're interested. And then Winnebago went from 787 million to 796 million.
There was increases in both counties?
Correct.
Were, which, what percentage was tipped on the increases?
Tid in, overall, we went up about 10 million--
Tid in overall, we went up about 10 million, about 1.4 million of that is tip. Keep in mind, there was 3 million that went out of tip to general tax base with tid one closure.
And I see there's no, no information on tax rate yet, but we'll get that soon after budget.
Yeah, probably early November.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to comment, and I know it's not official till November, but the 2015 equalized values for the city, we've reached our billion-dollar threshold, which is, I think, quite an accomplishment for a small city. And I think the mayor should throw a party or something. So, I hope we have an article on that, you know, that in the paper, that we've hit that such a milestone. And also, item O, the 2016 budget review sessions, I asked the mayor to put this budget review session in the packet. For some years, we've been talking about different ideas with that. Instead of having the four meetings, and maybe have three meetings, or other communities, they do a Saturday, which they schedule, they have an agenda, scheduled times where each department shows up. And if we would do something like that, I think Saturday, November 14th, would be a good date to accomplish that. And public would have more access to showing up to an event like that. And also, I know a lot of us are workful. Do you have something to say? Pardon me? Oh, I said? Oh, okay. Well, yeah, that's a, that's a national holiday, so we'd have to adjust that if we would do a Saturday. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll cross that one off. But just, just an idea, to throw it out to the council to see if that's something we'd want to do and just have one, one fresh day of budget hearings. But we won't do that in here, honey. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the minutes and communications? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda has seven items this evening. The minutes to approve from the special common council meeting of August 17th, and the regular council meeting of August 17th. The Board of Public Works recommendations from August 17th. The payment to Yankee General Contractors and the Gilbert Tressle, and that's for $63,405.26. The payment to Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction, and that is for $89,918.07. The Plan Commission recommendations from August 18th. The certified survey map for 1049 Brighton Drive, and the easement for trail extension from Oak Park Place to Parker Farm Park. And the Nina-Manasha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation from September 2nd for the approval of the cost distribution formula for budget year 2016, with the City of Nina's share being 60.01% and the City of Manasha's share being 39.99%. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we make motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 7.
There's a motion a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for August 20th through September 3rd. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 8/2015 to 9/315 in the amount of $5,639,380.04.
There's a motion a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 17 licensing period. Do we have a motion for those recommended for approval? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated September 2nd, 2015.
There's a motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Do we have a motion for the licenses recommended for denial at this point? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to deny Kekeisha Bradley the beverage operator's license.
There's a motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 3 is the Third Street-Brighton Drive green space alterations. We do have the memos from the two committees that it was recommended to be reviewed by in the packet this evening. Do we have a motion at this point? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make motion to approve the Third Street-Brighton Drive green space alterations.
There's a motion a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you. Would the park department be taking control of this, this property then?
Well, I don't know if taking control of it is the right way to put it. We would still be maintaining it.
So they're going to, who was maintaining it before?
We, the park department was.
Okay. Is it, what are the rules going to be? What rules are they going to, is that piece of property going to fall under it then? Is there different rules for open pieces of property and different rules for park
Well, I guess my opinion on that would be is it, it would be, it's not a park. The park rules per se would not pertain to that piece of property until which time it may become a park. But right now, it isn't.
So we're just approving, at this point, we're just approving the alterations, and there was a lot of discussion about the placement of the bench, and I don't think there was any problem with this meant capping the placement of the bench. Is that all we're approving at this point?
Right now, you're approving that there'd be a concrete sidewalk, or riverwalk, or whatever you'd want to call it, up against the shore wall and the construction of a bench. If you wanted to convert this to a park, I believe that would have to be done by ordinance, We've done, in the past, we've done it by ordinance. We've designated certain areas parks. We also may have a reason to do so with the Third Street Bridge. We may be swapping some land for other land for a park, so this, we may want to do that at that point. But if you wanted to do it for park rules type reasons, we could do that.
Well, there was a lot of discussion, discussion at the park board meeting about what rules are there going to be, and then there's a lot of discussion about other parcels in the city of Manasha. So I just wanted to combine those with that. Will, so will this be coming back as designated park property?
Not, not yet. There was no plans to designate it until there was a specific reason to do so.
Well, I think there is a specific reason to do that, because if we're going to start providing benches and a place to sit down there, the neighbors that are joining it are going to want to know what the rules and regulations that portion of the property are going to be.
And we can put that on the next park board agenda, and that could come this way if you'd like to do that.
That would be probably the appropriate thing to do. And then there was questions about the placement of the bench, and I know they didn't have nothing designated at this point because they didn't know about ice shoves and who's going to maintain this bench and which neighbor is the bench going next to, because in the discussion, the two adjoining neighbors didn't sign the petition, I was told. I don't know if that's true or not. And they're the ones that are greatly affected by this creation of this piece of property. It's not a creation of a piece of property, but the use is changing.
Sure, you could say the use is changing slightly. Mr. Grady is here this evening. I don't know if he knows if either of the neighbors signed that. Do we have unanimous consent to hear from Mr. Grady this evening?
Tom Grady, 999 Brighton Drive, Manasha. Thank you for your time. The signatures that were gathered for that meeting were done midday when, I just went up and down the street. People that were home that I talked to, all of them signed it. The people that weren't home, obviously, didn't. I can gather more signatures if you want. And there must be something in place for property ends, as you call them. Your father's house on the end of DePere Street, who maintains that? Who put that together? Your brother lived on the end of Appleton Road, that end was done too. Who maintained and did all that? There's got to be something in place. Your brother comes to me and asks for flowers to put in his end, so.
Yes, yes, and this is stuff that's got to be hashed out by the park board.
Well, I would think there was something in place if all this is happening in your neighborhood.
Very little, because there's no set time for that use of that piece of property, and that was the problems with those other dead ends, the DePere Street dead end and Appleton Street dead end. They could be used 24/7, and there was no, no control over it. And that's what affected the neighbors the most. What could be done down there? What do you have for facilities? Because people are staying down there for 10 hours at a time, so you know they're doing something down there, and we need to have a designated set of rules for these dead ends, because there are, there are many parks, in essence. So, I would like this discussed at the park board meeting. I have no problem with what you're doing with that dead end.
Well, the one thing too is the crews are moving. Their house is up for sale, and they're moving out of Manasha. And he has offered to donate the concrete for the pore of this wall or the sidewalk. So I thought it would be a nice gesture if by some chance, the wall could be poured, or the sidewalk could be poured before they leave town. I don't know how soon their house will sell. It's only 800 million, but.
Maybe the mayor's in the mansion.
Director Stino would like that 800 million tax roll.
I'm exaggerating.
So I have no problem with the concept that you have there, but I would like the rules set out for these pieces of property. I would like to include DePere Street and Appleton Street in this discussion at the park board meeting.
So Director Tenney, could you put a discussion of what I like to call the parklets? So basically, all the, the street ends, I think, we'd want to talk about.
Yes, if there's any other Aldermen that have street ends in their districts, that maybe they should bring them forward at that point.
Isn't there one on the island?
Yeah, we should talk about them all in general, I think.
Okay, which one should be included? Because I don't know if you get more rules with the parks than you do with the general just pieces of city property. And that was the most of the discussion, discussion with the residents that live next door to them.
Sure. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I'd too like to thank Mr. Grady for his time and efforts, and his flower beds look great down there, and it's a great addition to the city. When we get into benches and anchoring different things, you know, we have to be careful with that. We had problems even with city staff out at Coswell Park with some pleacher sections. And, you know, we have to be careful with, when we start designing our own things, and making sure that they're engineered properly and they're anchored properly according to the engineering standards. And I think that's what the park board was looking at with the bench situation, as I talked to a couple of them. Okay, we create a park, now what, now we create a parking problem too. So, I think the bigger picture is if we create something, are we creating another problem on top of that? So, the ends of the streets, and I think it was 2001 or 2002, after the city square was redesigned, and in 2000, we took the city square and all these ends, and we put ordinance together, putting those all under one category. And there was some rules and regulations for those, and I think they all had to abide by the park hours that we have in place. And so, I'll ask that the attorney look up that document on what we have for the street ends. Curtis Reed Square at that time was, was all put together. So, that would give us more direction on, on what we have. I think the park, park department is, it's a decommittee to look at these things and make the decisions on, you know, placement of things and the anchoring of things. They have swing sets and slides and many different apparatuses that they know what, they know what we need to do with that. So, it's, it's great that we have community involvement, and we just need to run it through the proper channels, and I think the park department is that avenue for us to do something like that. Thank you.
Alderman Linkin?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to put this under the parks, and then that means the parks would maintain that. But I want to mention, and if Mr. Grady has any rejections, feel free to let me know, but I don't know if I, if you need to make a motion for this, or let me know. But here's where I want to go. I know we have insurance for, what do we call that? Volunteer. Okay, volunteer insurance. So say, now I know Mr. Grady has been, takes pride in that out there, and where he lives, he basically has no lawn, so he's been taking care of and on that parcel out there. When the grass was getting long and we couldn't get it out to cover it, that he would go out and cut it and take care of it, which I think is, is very, very nice of him to do that. So, I guess I would like to put in somewhere that, you know, if we're adding that to the parks, and in case they can't get there, he lives right there, that he would be able to go cut the lawn. And that way, we have that in place instead, you know, in case somebody says, "Well, what's Grady doing cutting the lawn?" You know, that way, it's, it's there that he's able to do that.
So what we're looking at is, City of Nina used to have a policy, and I haven't been able to get my hands on it, and I know Brian hasn't either.
Is that okay, Mr. Tom? I mean, I don't want to.
But let's make it a little bit more broad, though. That they have kind of an adopt a flowerbed type of a program, that the people in the city can formally adopt areas of different parks. And that gives us control over who does it and what they do there.
Okay.
So, I would like to formalize that program a little bit further and give others opportunities. We have another person that kind of.
Who maintains?
Well, no, maintains the island at the end of the Racine Street Bridge.
Okay.
So we have a couple of these things informally happening right now, but it would be nice to have a formal policy so we could have them listed on the volunteer insurance, and so that we don't have people kind of going rogue and doing gardens where we don't want gardens either.
Right.
So, I think we should do it in that manner rather than on this specific site.
Yeah, I just.
And we'll keep working on that, and we'd have the park board then designate those people.
Yeah, that's good. That's what I was kind of looking for, is to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, we're both on the same track.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Just a thought here. We all have projects in our districts that need to be done. I know there's a lot of curb and gutter and things in my district that have to be done yet, and also, sections of the street where we've had water main issues that have to be replaced, and I, I don't think, we, you know, we lay this all out nine months ahead of time, and we just can't come in with projects and bump some certain projects out that need to be done that the whole public benefits from. So, I don't want to put our department heads in a position where they feel that they have to pull their crews off and work on something, you know, this could take, you know, it's a pretty good-sized shoreline, and I don't know how much time or effort, if it's park crews or public works crews, that are going to go in here and do the work and pull off these other projects. So, we have to be sensitive to the timetable. It's September, and we need to get our streets in order, and before we, you know, do something like this. So, I hope we can be sensitive to the two departments. And also, we've had other people up here asking to do projects, and all I want to say is that we have to treat everybody equal in this community. And if somebody wants to do a project, we make certain people, we get all the hoops out, make them jump through all these hoops. Other people seem they don't have any hoops. So, let's, let's make sure that we're treating everybody equal in the community.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you. And then. Thank you. And memorandum, memorandum, it ends with, it's pending the outcome of the Jefferson Park Master Plan. When is this master plan going to start being put together? I've been hearing about it for three years now. And is this going to be tied into that? Is there going to be a walkway, water reservoir, the whole ball of wax?
The master plan is very important to both Brian and I. And I think we need to put all of our focus on it when we do it. Right now, we're working on the Gilbert River Walk as well as Woodlands Park. And I've directed Park and Rec not to take on a third project. So, this, I hope that the master plan will be the next project. And it does include the reservoir. It does include this green space, as well as some of the neighborhood around Jefferson Park.
Yes, and at the park board meeting, it did include Wince Park. And we're...
Just go as far as once.
That came up with a lot of discussion with Wince Park and what the modifications would be to Jefferson Park to take those amenities in.
Could very well include that as well, yes.
So, tentatively, when do you think you're going to even start discussing it?
My hope is next year. My hope is next year, once we get the rest of the other, these other two parks done. This is a really important project, and you don't want to do this halfway.
I agree. But it's three years and we haven't even had, you guys didn't even sit down to discuss it yet, did you?
Yes, we did. We actually...
Is there preliminary drawings or anything that the council should be?
We had RFPs out, and we did get responses back to those RFPs. But we could, because we didn't think we had sufficient staff time to do a really good job on this, we did not award that project to anyone at that point.
Because there's a neighborhood park committee or neighborhood park group, Jefferson Park group, that got together and we walked through the park and they came up with ideas. And I don't know if Brian, did you get any of those ideas yet, that when they walked through the park?
They haven't. But I talked to that woman, I think who's organizing that group. And we are going to have them present their ideas at the October park board meeting. That's what we preliminarily talked about. So, all the ideas, I think maybe you guys talked about it, will come to the park board in October.
And for the neighborhood ideas, it all bounces off that park. So, I would like some kind of direction that they could be told. Because these are the neighbors that are really involved, and they would like to know what direction we're going with this park, not just, not keep bouncing out another year, another year. And then they're going to lose interest in this neighborhood group.
By the way, this group is not formed by the city. This group was...
No, it isn't. But they are tax, they are very involved. And they're taxpayers of the city of Manasha.
I understand that. But it's, I just wanted to make sure that you realized it wasn't a group that was formed by the city.
I entirely agree. And I know that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Motion, Kieran, roll call, 7-0.
Item four is approval to accept and spend $10,840 in Wisconsin Department of Health Disease and Control Prevention Emergency Preparedness Supplemental Ebola Funding. And you have a memo in your packet. Director McKinney had to leave for a medical situation that she had to attend to. So Director Stino can answer questions if anyone has any. Alderman Taylor?
I'll make a motion to approve and accept and spend $10,840 in Wisconsin Department of Health Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Supplemental Ebola Funding.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion, Kieran, roll call, 7-0.
Item five is the offer to purchase 320 Shoot Street. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, before we make a motion, sometimes we take these liberties. I would like, there's quite the assortment of documents here tonight. And I would like Director Kyle to explain to us where we're actually at with the offer that is before us, which there's multiples.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Taylor. Yes, there was quite a lot of back and forth on the acquisition of this property. My first offer was at $192,600. That was countered at 360. There were three other iterations of counter offers. They came back at 240. They came back at 306 or something. I came back at 276. They came back at 300, or something like that. And finally, we ended up at $290,000, which coincidentally was the maximum amount I was authorized to go up to at the last meeting. So, we do have a purchase. It's signed by both parties, but was contingent upon approval by the town council. And that's why it's back here.
Thank you, Director Kyle. You know, with this situation, the city used to have an agreement with this property. And it was a different owner, of course, so things are, things do change. But we had an agreement that we would maintain the property. And we had put a slurry seal on the parking lot. We had taken care of all the snow removal and removed the snow from the lot, not only plowed, but removed the snow. And, you know, that's a pretty hefty agreement right there. And I'm wondering if we ever did look at more of a maintenance agreement for the use of the lot than that just holding out purchasing this.
Well, again, what's driving this is we have an agreement with McCrone Downtown Development that committed the city to providing them 120 parking stalls. And that agreement commenced in 1998-ish. So, we've got a long way to go on that agreement. And we are bound by our agreement with McCrone to provide them this parking for that length of time. And quite honestly, this site is the only viable and least costly alternative for providing for our obligation to McCrone Downtown Development. And hence, are bringing this forward for your consideration.
Okay. We never had made them an offer on a maintenance lease, that we would take care of the property and...
Maintenance lease for...
Like we had with Chris Fedler when he owned Germania Hall, with maintaining the parking lot, the upkeep of it, the snow removal.
Yeah. I think that was a much different scenario there, because there was an operating business entity in place at that time. And they were getting something in return from the city, getting their property cleared. Whereas, we're in a scenario now where these people are interested in selling the property and essentially cashing out, not maintaining a, you know, long-term presence there.
Director Stino, we had talked about the TIF financing with this project. We had to give up our parking downtown. Would the TIF been able to support this 300,000, additional $300,000?
This was listed, I believe, in the TIF plan as a contingent project. So it wouldn't become part of the TIF until or unless the TIF could afford it.
Okay. But at this given time, can the TIF afford it?
No.
Okay. That's the elephant in the room I was talking about back when the developers came and put us at an unfortunate timetable that we couldn't maneuver very well. And came up with some other ideas about not building a parking ramp and probably saving $3 million in the downtown by taking out some distressed housing close to the Broad Street parking lot. And by putting us in this position because of the timeframe that it was brought to us, this project was being, was thought of two years before it came to the council. And then it came to the council in the 11th hour, and we had to make some tough decisions. And I met with the developer on site of the Broad Street parking lot and asked them about the possibility of including more flat surface parking to relieve some distressed homes and rental properties, most of them. And I see most, quite a few of them now are up for sale. We're building a parking ramp out into the street. And, you know, we have, we're going to distress these properties even more. And the whole decision here was for this, not being able to move forward with something like that was the timeframe that we were put under by the developers. And I really believe that we need to go back and ask the developers for help with this. We took care of their demolition costs, the cost of the hotel. They put on our platter this parking ramp at the last second. And it pushed our agreement with the McCrone people out of that parking lot. And now it puts us in a situation where, you know, this isn't even supported by the TIF. And there were some overtures by the developer that for a half million dollars, if we didn't get the state grant, that they would be willing to step up and pay that half million dollars. And it doesn't hurt to ask. And I think we need to go back. And this isn't part of the development agreement. This is a situation that we're put in because of that short timetable. And I think we need to go back and ask the developers what they can do to help the citizens and taxpayers of Manasha afford this extra $300,000 that we can't afford at this time. And I don't think there's nothing wrong with doing that because of the situation that we were put in. And I would like to table this offer until we can go back and direct the mayor and Director Kyle to go back and see if we can convince the developers to help us out. They had said that when they were here in the audience, that they will, you know, help us, work with us any way possible. And we certainly kept up our end of the bargain. And because of those timetables that we were put under, we couldn't maybe make the best financial situations for the community. And because of that, now we need a little help. So I think it goes both ways. We help developers, they help us. And I think we owe it to the taxpayers to go back and ask them if they can help us with this. And what, it may be the full amount, it may be half the amount or something. But like they say, all they can do is say no. So, I would like to make a motion that we table this offer to purchase to the next meeting and direct staff to go back and talk with the developers about the purchase up, to see if they can assist us in the purchase of this parking lot.
Is there, is a motion in a second? We can discuss table, correct? So there is discussion allowed on motion? Alderman, key hand discussion on table, I guess, if you... Okay. So, any other, Alderman, better?
I'd like to ask Director Kyle or the attorney what the ramifications of tabling this at this time. Because this is date, time sensitive also, correct? Or is it, is the contingency strictly on council approval and time has nothing to do with it?
Um...
September 1?
September 30th, correct.
30th for closing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but September 1 was the acceptance?
Binding acceptance was to be by September 15.
Okay.
So, this, by tabling this, this would then render this counter offer no longer valid. So there would have to be a new counter offer created, amending the binding acceptance date and possibly the closing date.
That's what I was afraid of. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I don't think I'm afraid of it, because I remember during the negotiations, I asked for some like $600,000. And they said no. And then we were waiting for the $500,000 coming from the state. And I heard, somewhere in the paper there was, if that $500,000 didn't come, we would cover it. So I think it's worth taking back to the developer at this point, because we accepted their first offer on this whole TIF thing. So I think we should bring something back to them.
Alderman Taylor?
I respect the Alderman Bennett's, you know, the timetable here that we're under. But it's not a piece of property that is sought after by a party or somebody that we're not, that we don't want involved. It's a section of a parking lot. And certainly, they're developers, and they understand that there's negotiations. And if we bring it back, you know, to the table here from the developers on the 21st of September, and see what people have an answer for them at that point, we can write another offer right after that, if that's what we choose to do. But I think we owe it to the people of this community to try to negotiate. We negotiate in good faith. We took their first offer. And now we're in a situation where we need a little help. And it's not, you don't have to be shamed of asking for help. And it's something all part of this project. And it's, this situation is created by the project itself. So, I'm confident we can work something out.
I guess we had two people now that said we took the developer's first offer. And I guess I'm not really standing up for the developers at this point, but we did not take the developer's first offer. As both Director Kyle and Attorney Captain can tell you, we had a long and very, we talked a lot about, long discussions about these. And we had a lot of changes from what the first offer was, and a lot of concessions on both sides, I think. I think we, in good faith, said that we were going to find these other spots. We did look at the space that Alderman Taylor was looking at. It would have cost more than the ramp by the time we were done purchasing and removing and developing that lot. And we didn't know if we'd even still fit the full 300 spaces within that area. We also looked at expanding the parking lot, parking ramp, to take care of these additional 100 spaces that we're looking for. That was significantly more expensive, probably three times more expensive, and didn't net us even 100 spaces. And we also looked at expanding the Shoot Street lot, which was more expensive than this offer. And I believe it still didn't net us as many spaces as well. So, we have looked at a lot of different things. The price on this, we can argue over the price, but I don't think that we can go back to the developers and ask them to pay for someone else's parking lot.
If I may, I think, you know, Alderman Zalinski and Alderman Taylor had referred to the offer to sort of backfill the CDI grant in the case that wasn't awarded. But I think there's a distinction to be made between that offer, because that offer was made to get the building that they were committed to build for their tenants in place. Whereas, this parking is really a matter of the city's obligation to another entity. And I think we had a very thorough discussion about, you know, how this parking would need to be sort of redistributed as this ramp moved forward. So, that's just, I just wanted to make that comment, that, you know, the offer to backfill that grant was specifically directed toward the office tower, not just some general cost category.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Kyle stated before that he believes this is the most viable and least expensive option at this point. And while I don't necessarily like the price that we'd be paying for this parking, I also believe this is a simple supply and demand issue. And it's a business transaction. The seller of this property under... The seller of this property understands that the city needs parking and therefore it's in their best interest to get as much for that as possible. And at the same time, we have an obligation to fulfill through another, through a previous developer's agreement. So while I don't necessarily like the price we'd be paying, I think it's the lowest price we're going to get at this point. So I would not support tabling this for another two weeks or so. Oops.
There's some, oh, it's because, it's because he's on Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Zelinski and Alderman Taylor, and I will support tabling this. For one thing, the Germania Hall owner is not doing us any favors. As you said, Greg, he wants to cash out. So to me, he's not doing, he's not doing the city any favors. Going to the developers, I don't know, you said you had many discussions, the mayor and yourself, many, many, many discussions, but did you discuss and saying, well, hey, we've given you, and we have, we've given the developers, we will be giving developers every penny back to them, every penny. So to ask them if they can help us fund this, wow, I can't believe you, no, I can't believe you wouldn't support this. All they can say is no. I mean, are you afraid to ask them? I'll ask them. If you guys are afraid, I will. I mean, we'll go down there, Dan, myself and James will ask them, hey, Mr. Berkstrom, can you help us? Says no, then we say thank you and leave. I can't believe we can't do that. So I just wondered if you had any discussions to the, with the developers about that they're going to be getting every penny back that they put into this? Probably not. So, but you said you had many, many discussions, but you didn't have any on that.
Well, it's in the development agreement what they're getting back. They're getting back the tax increment that they're creating on the project. And in the event that that, that doesn't end up being sufficient to pay for the ramp, that will be their responsibility. So they are...
But we're still paying for it because I asked a question to Mr. Hogarty and I says, are you paying, correct me if I'm wrong, I might be wrong, okay? I asked the question, are you going to be paying taxes on, on the parking lot? Are you going to be paying taxes on that parking lot? And he said yes. From what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, from what I understand, aren't we going to be, aren't they going to be getting their money back on that parking lot?
Their taxes on the parking?
So then how are they paying taxes on it? They're eventually getting it back, correct?
Well, they're paying taxes on the parking structure and on the office tower, which is supporting the TIF.
But they'll be getting that back, right? They'll be going back into their pockets?
It will be going back into paying for the parking ramp, that's correct.
Right, okay. So I can't see why we wouldn't ask them if, if they couldn't help us, you know. Mr. Hogarty said, and Alderman Taylor is right, that they would do everything they could to help the city any way they can, could, if they can. So by asking them, by not asking them, to me is ridiculous. Thank you.
This is in Germania Hall right now. At last meeting, I asked that possibly look at purchasing the whole building for our health department and some other, maybe a police storage, any area of a storage problem and to enhance the, the quality of the different departments. And, you know, I look at what we have over there, 4th of July, Labor Day weekend, we have all these, probably the worst homemade signs I've seen that are four feet by four feet, stuck out on Broad Street, stuck out on Taco Street, stuck over here on Racine Street across from the post office. And it's all says "Rummet Sale." And they had a parking lot full of everybody's used furniture and everything all weekend long over there. They had one of those long tower guys that blow, you know, that's 40 feet tall or whatever. And now here we're putting together a quality downtown and then we have something like this. And we have an opportunity to get out of $25,000 a year rent for the, the health department, It's always, can I, I hate this up here. It's always all right for everybody else's timetable, but this body here, when this body's got to do something, it's now, now, now. There's no time, there's no team concept here to brainstorm, let's look at the possible scenarios here. There's, there's no, yeah, there is a timetable on this, but it's not going anywhere. It's a rummet sale over there and this parking lot's not going anywhere. And when we went in the closed session with the office tower downtown, I asked this question here in closed session. There's an elephant, I said, there's a projector stand, let's look at that as the elephant in the room. There's 120 stalls that we don't know how we're going to come up with. And the mayor, Director Kyle, he just kind of, yeah, yeah, okay, there's an elephant in the room, we'll look at that. It should have been part of it. Now we say it's not part of the development agreement. Well, it should have been, and it should have been negotiated at that time. For us to provide that ramp, they pushed us out of this agreement with McClone and pushed us out of the 120 stalls. It's all connected. And the mayor had some half truths there about that property that I'm talking about over there because I met with the developers on site with the parking lot at the 11th hour handset, you know, what about the situation here? And it was cheaper to buy those properties, $700,000 to buy the whole block up on First Street and, and Broad Street. And then to put a flat surface parking lot in there to accommodate a safe crossing by splitting the parking lot in two for the people to travel between their office building and, and the opening that we have.
We're getting way, way, way off topic here.
That's all right, then you talk about it, but I can't talk about it, Mayor.
I gave you an opportunity.
And I should have nipped you in the butt when you were talking because you didn't have the right to talk.
Mr. Taylor?
Unless you want to give up your seat and go out there. You know that, Mayor. Now I talk about the properties and you don't want to hear it. It's always one way up here. It's always one way up here. It's never about the council. It's always about the department heads.
Mr. Taylor?
And they put us under these false timetables and I'm talking about the property here and I'm talking about the timetable, how we got here to this situation. And then again, I said, there's an elephant in the room and the public, the Post Crescent even wrote about it, that there's an elephant in the room with these 120 stalls. Now we're saying, oh my goodness, it's not part of this project. Let's not go back and ask, and then we got this terrible timetable here to, to, you know, it's not going anywhere. We have time and we can ask a question. And the question is, we need help. And what's wrong with asking for help and saving possibly the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars? I see nothing wrong with that. You can at least ask the question.
Alderman Spencer?
Obviously, I was not part of this discussion, so I'm trying to catch up a little bit here. What I'm kind of hearing today, tonight, is that confirmation, we have an obligation to provide the parking. There doesn't seem to be any dispute on that. But I'm also, I think I'm hearing is that this specific property, all things considered at this point in time, appears to be the best property for that purpose. So then it seems to me like there's two separate issues. One is, do we have an obligation to provide this parking? And the answer to that is yes, appears to be yes. The other issue is, how do we fund this purchase? So am I kind of getting it right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion on the table right now is to table the offer to pur, table the offer to purchase and it would be brought back at a later date then at that point?
The next meeting.
We'd have to have someone bring it back off the table though. So that's the motion on the table right now. I don't see any more discussion. Could we have a?
Table.
Sure. Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 5-2.
Missing a person. Mike? You want to vote or not? Which way did you vote? Should we?
Do you want me to reset it?
Okay, so just, we'll just record it as 4-3?
Yes.
So the motion is tabled at this point. We have two people in the audience, well, three people in the audience right now. And if there's no objections, I'm going to move to the items that we have people out there for that are on the council agenda. Unfortunately, Jerry, you're on one of the future agendas, so I can't skip down to you. But there is item seven, a request to vacate a portion of Midway Crossing. And Bob Drifka is in the audience this evening if anyone has any questions on that item or if there's a motion at this time. Alderman Benner?
I have questions. Do we want a motion first or?
Either way.
Can I ask a question? Okay, my question will be directed to Public Works Director Mark. Do we own this road at this point? Because I thought we, we did not own it when it was put in and it didn't meet our standards.
Correct.
And did we end up accepting that road then?
Yes.
We did, so we own it.
We, yes, we don't own the access drives out to both Oneida Street or Midway Road, but the rest of the interior road system we own.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. There's, the process for vacating this street is a little different than the process these that we did just, was it last year or the year before for vacating a portion of Canal Street and Georgetown Place inasmuch as those vacations were initiated by the city. Whereas this is being initiated as, through a petition by the, by the landowner. And the process is similar, however, there is still public notice required and you wouldn't be taking action tonight to vacate the street. This was being brought to your attention for the purpose of making you aware of this request by the developer. We will be publishing notice, there will be three insertions, and then there will be a public hearing, I think at our first meeting in October, I believe, whereby you will take comments from adjoining landowners or the public. And then you would be able to act on the vacation of a portion of that street.
Well, so this was placed under action items. What's the action we're requesting?
I'm not sure why it was placed as an action item rather than a communication.
Okay, and then, it's hard to describe for anybody, but will this include all three of these, these lots? For this development?
Will it include?
Does he have proposed up on top that faces Oneida Street? And then we have these two?
So the, the two, the, the center lots essentially are what's being looked at for the development. And then the remainder would be accessed by presumably two cul-de-sacs and there would still be likely a cross access or some sort of access agreement through the development property.
Before this goes to a hearing, will there be a site plan that's going to show?
There, there will be a site plan, yes.
Okay. Because I first saw this and I have concerns because the traffic out there is already kind of, kind of crazy and I'm kind of wondering where their, the traffic would be accessing, where trucks would be coming in because Providence Terrace Center is getting close to residential properties and things like that.
Yes.
So a lot more information than this would be really important to me. So, okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank BFT Investments, LLP and Commercial Horizons for the development of the festival food grocery store in this area. I think it's a, it's a great project. Something I talked to Director Radke about a couple of weeks ago is behind CVS is a, is a street there. And when you access that street into Midway Road, there's an island that separates, you can't make a left turn. And Director Radke had told me that was something to do with the county on, on that particular. But we're going to want this customers to enter and exit, I would think, through that area. And we want it to go to the controlled intersection. And so I think there has to be some sort of an adjustment at that intersection there to accommodate that left turn back towards the west, Midway Road and back to Oneida Street. So something with the site planning, with the planning of the project, I think we just, I just want to bring that up early because we just had this conversation. And I would like to make a motion to...
So what we need right now is a motion to accept the letter from Drifka Group to vacate the street.
I'll make a motion to accept the correspondence from Drifka to vacate a portion of Midway Crossing.
Second. So motion in a second? Did you have discussion too?
Yes. Director Kyle, or, okay, so we're trying to figure this out. So lot number two is CVS, yes? CVS is on the corner. And then Lakeview Credit Union, or now Verve, I think it's called, is the one south of there. Okay, so then where the proposed lots are, that, like the...
They're going from Oneida to Providence Terrace.
Correct.
Would be where the grocery store?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. So for, for the proposal, where would be the entrances, entrances and the exits for the grocery store? Maybe right on Oneida?
No.
Nothing on Oneida?
Well, there's, that's access controlled by the state and there's the, they won't allow any more accesses, public street accesses or I believe driveway accesses between that Province Link, the road to the south and then Midway Road in the north. There is the one access at the Credit Union.
Yeah, I see an access easement there. So there is an access there.
Mm-hmm.
Can it be expanded?
I don't believe there's plans on expanding that.
So all their access would be from, from where then?
Well, from Province Link on the south.
Okay.
And Province Terrace on the east. And then that existing driveway.
So they would push the building out towards Oneida and put all parking in back?
The building is actually up against Province and the parking works its way out.
So they just work around the building then?
Correct.
Are they reversing that? They would look better.
I've asked that question and I did not receive an affirmative response.
So I heard, I noticed that done over in Appleton, Walgreens, College Avenue, where they propose all the parking behind there. It looks so much nicer, all the parking behind the building.
And that will be a separate discussion through the site plan.
Okay. And then the neighbors are going to have their chance to voice their opinion on this, all these other businesses?
There is, we publish notice of the proposed street vacation.
You did already and?
No, that will be published subsequent to this meeting.
So we're just preliminarily agreeing that we should vacate that?
You're, you're agreeing to consider the vacation, is what you want.
Was there any discussion, maybe that discussion's coming about moving Midway Crossing then through those other last two lots there then? Is there?
I'm not...
Any discussion, well, were you vacating that street? Were you going to move that street or that's, is there just going to be, and that's just where it's going to end?
As, as it stands now, the sections that are not being vacated would remain and be altered in some format to accommodate the access to the development site and to... And to, you know, we may also need a little right-of-way or something when we get to the point of doing a CSM.
Okay, so there's two, there's three proposed lots. What's the other corner of the Providence Link and Providence Terrace? What's that?
That's the corner of, uh... I'm sorry, which one?
Providence Link and Providence Terrace. I don't know what lot number it is.
Okay, the one that fronts on Oneida?
No.
The other one? That is also owned by BFD Investments. And so they would be looking at a different development on that site.
Which would be coming shortly after. I know you got to be careful here.
Yeah. But that's their desire is to, you know, develop that.
I just don't want to cut us short on selling these other two. Was there any discussion on that? Does this affect those?
There's, uh, BFD Investments owns the remaining vacant lots that, about that, save for the one at, uh, Providence Link and Oneida, which is owned by Van's Realty.
Sure it's worth exploring.
So if the council would like to entertain it, Bob Drifka is here this evening. I don't know if he'd like to make a comment or answer any questions for you guys. Did you want to comment on it at all, Bob?
You know, I'm the land seller, not the developer.
But I do need you to come up to the microphone if you need to.
Yeah, I'm the land seller, not the developer. I'll be talking about the other lots around it. If this gets and goes through, then I'll be coming back with the other lots. But I'm not the developer or the owner of this development that you're discussing tonight. I'm just selling the land to them. I mean, I've seen plenty of site plans and things where BFT is totally in support of the way it is, the way it's carved, the way it's set up, totally in support of it. And then we want to bring in supporting businesses and stuff around it, which we'll come back for.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Great, so, um, Festival knows about the entrances and everything. What's there?
Yes, the...
So they know going in, but...
Yes, the, there's, uh, a developer who has been working with both Drifka and Festival. And so they have, you know, a preliminary site plan configured. And so, yes, they are on board with this.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Motion? Motion carried on roll call seven-zero.
I just want to make a comment, something Alderman Zalinski said. And by we have the developers here, uh, you know, how we lay this out, I think, is real important for the long term. And if, um, the parking lots can be adjusted to, and you guys know this better than anything, on how to lay this out so this whole corridor looks nice instead of having it kind of hodgepodge is, you know, CVS and the bank there and...
We've seen, I've seen this with our site plan. I'm 50% favorable. I would make the adjustment.
And I know you're sensitive to that, thank you.
I would accept the offer. I screwed up, Reggie.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move down to, if no one has objections, the two K-9 items, number eleven and twelve. The chief is here, but also Jeff Jorgensen is here. So if we want to move on to item eleven... Try to remember what we did and didn't do. Ted? Yeah, go ahead.
Item eleven, you should have some information in your packet, reference to what Officer Jorgensen has put together. If you remember Officer Jorgensen, who's here tonight, um, works in our elementary schools. I've been at this for about 20 years in law enforcement. And when Officer Jorgensen came to me with this idea, I must say, it probably ranks in the top five best ideas I think I've heard unequivocally. To give you an idea, uh, real high level, then Officer Jorgensen certainly answer any questions far better than I can on this because this has been his project. Uh, but a facility dog or a therapy dog, as some people tend to call them, uh, is something that has been dabbled with a little bit in law enforcement. There are a couple of agencies that we know that have received a therapy dog, but have used it more in-house. Uh, could either bring it if there was, you know, an officer fatality. Just kind of helps everyone heal within the building. Or if there is a, you know, a fatality out within the community, the dog could be brought in and help facilitate that healing process. But Officer Jorgensen, who has, uh, observed a lot of interesting things in the school setting, thought that there could be just a better way to deal with some of the children that have some issues and act out in the classroom. Having a couple aldermen who have teaching experiences, I'm sure you can all very much attest to what can go on in a classroom and the limitations that staff has to do it. What a better way. So I guess with that, if you want to throw any two cents in, Jeff, and then any questions that you may have about it. What we're looking at right now, or if you want to explain a little bit where you need to go and why we're here, that'd probably be good.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, what we're looking for now is, is kind of feedback and official support on the project initiative as well as, um... This is the point in which now the money has to be spent in order to, uh, it's not a given. This, uh, organization, K-9 Companions for Independence, uh, at any point can revoke, um, their interest in us, if you will, if they don't feel that their dog is being utilized to its potential. And so being able to go down and interview, um, for a mourning period, should everything go well there through the interview and assessment center, they would be saying, "We believe that Manasha has a need, uh, for this facility dog", and would put us on a waiting list. And then that waiting list, depending on, you know, how these, uh, breeders work, when the dogs came to availability, they would re-contact us, um, so that, uh, the dog could train the handler in how to properly behave. And then after that two-week status, send you out to the community, you know, to do good work.
So the request in front of you, any out-of-state travel that hasn't been budgeted for specifically at budget time, something that needs to go to the council? The organization that Jeff is talking about is out of Ohio. The dog that the city could potentially get has a value that they place on it of $60,000. It would not cost the city anything to obtain the dog. As far as going forward, again, we would bring this back to you if Jeff receives the affirmative response from them, that we would be placed on a waiting list. But certainly I want to draw the distinction that this is in no way, shape, or form your conventional K-9 dog that you would see in a law enforcement agency. This is completely something revolutionary that, uh, would be a really neat program that I think could very well be modeled across the country. So with that, I guess I'll open it to questions or comments.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. First, Officer Jorgensen, this, your information is excellent, very thorough. I've seen, I'm one of those who's in education, um, and in 16th or 17th year. And in that time, I've seen a lot of different trends in, um, in how to deal with crises or trauma. And trauma is something that's being discussed a lot now. More recently, we've seen work with what they call K-9 Good Citizens is something, where they're dogs that are trained. And they've been using those in more like nursing home settings, hospital settings, things like that. We've seen a program called CHAPS where we have students who, um, as part of the therapeutic role, spend time at a horse ranch. And I have to say that the results I've seen with some of those students, it's unconventional. It sounds odd perhaps, but it's effective. It's highly effective. So I fully support this.
Thank you. Officer Jordan, uh, I commend you for the work you've done on this, for the initiative you've taken to put this together. Your report, for me, not being in education, was, uh, very informative and very startling in terms of what you encounter in the school, in the classes. I've done a lot of reading on this topic on the internet. And I would encourage anybody that has a curiosity about how this works or where it works and the success rate, just simply Google it. And you'll find a host of different articles where this is being used to counsel victims and it's being used in some courthouses. And it's, uh, met with a lot of success. So I fully support this as well.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Thank you for the work on this. Is there a private organization that does this now with pets? Like Michael mentioned that they're visiting nursing homes and daycares now and schools and that we can't access and use?
There are certainly some volunteer groups and there are some ones to do it. But what's key and pivotal to this is the whole idea and the concept behind the elementary liaison program. We are trying to make inroads and trying to change the view and reach out to these kids in a way that is just not possible. Now, you may have a volunteer group that might come in on Friday at two o'clock, but Friday at two o'clock may not be the time that the student's acting out, biting a teacher and throwing desks across the room. What's key about this is that Jeff would have that dog and access to that dog at the time that that child's in crisis. And when that child's in crisis, the vision and the view is that if you put the desk down, you get to throw the ball for Fido, in essence. And in some students that really do not get to the point where Jeff or the other administrators and teachers are able to reach out to them, animals have a way of breaking down those barriers. The number one thing that we have requested at the police department is to see if they could see our K-9. And that's a drug dog or a... That is not a dog that is really meant to be a pet. And fortunately, our dog and dogs that many other agencies have are pretty tolerant of doing public relation types of things. So if that's the number one thing and that isn't even designed for it, imagine the inroads that you could have at the schools and then at community events or other things with a dog that is specifically designed to be that way. Very similar to the Brewers mascot dog that they found. And look at the inroads and the number of people that that dog ended up having. And that's really kind of Jeff's vision with it. So while there are other ones out there, and as others have alluded, they are very successful, we need that dog there at the time of crisis to really make that impact.
How many crises are there? I have no idea what's going on in grade school. How many crises are there? Is this dog going to be used a lot or is it going to be sitting idle most of its time? And where does it, where does it sit at that point?
Yeah, well, that's the unpredictable part about this. When I first started this pioneer trip, uh, it was multiple crises a day. And so then the work became, um, building relationships with the students so that they knew my response was going to be, so they knew what it was going to be. And that could help bring that calming factor. You know, kids are all, are all different sizes. You have, uh, just temper tantrums because somebody didn't sleep well last night, all the way to, you know, an autistic child that doesn't like to be touched and somebody put their hands on him and he just, you know, can't handle that. So the crisis part of it is the most unpredictable. And that's what this, you know, this dog could provide is that non-judgmental, non-verbal distraction, all in one package. And, uh, you know, oftentimes, just like, well, you're a father. When your kids are in a temper tantrum, they're not hearing when you're yelling at them. You can tell that later, they don't even, sometimes they don't remember that. And this is your own child. And for me to work with, um, a community of other people's children, you know, we don't have that same relationship. Some of them are skewed just because I'm a police officer. And they've been raised that if a police officer shows up, he's going to take you to jail. And they know that's coming. And that's the farthest thing from the truth. But trying to break down some of those barriers, I think this, uh, this tactic would work phenomenal. And even the K-9 Companions for Independence, they, you know, you have to have a backup plan because it isn't going to be 100% thing. And the neat part about this dog is it's extremely obedient. They train under, um, you know, all sorts of different distractions. And you'll be able to just hand the leash off to anyone because the dog will be able to follow, you know, whoever. And, uh...
And the intent isn't that the dog will remain in a vehicle? So it's not like we have to outfit a police vehicle that has the specific equipment that a regular K-9 would. The dog's literally going to be at Jeff's side for the eight-plus hours that he works a day.
Yeah, he would fall under the American Disabilities Act and be able to proceed anywhere I was working.
So I didn't read all this stuff, but what support is the school bringing in for this?
You know, I've got fall allergies and they settled in my ears, so could you repeat that?
What support is the school bringing forward for this dog?
Well, the original idea was whispered by the school to me and said, you know, not so much...
Maybe it's the same allergies.
You should get a therapy dog. But they said, you know, we were talking about these reading programs. We have dogs that come in and read with children. The dogs don't read, but they read with the children. And, uh, the tempo of the school is incredible when you see that animal walking down the hall. And they said, "Wow, you should get something like that." And that's where my Google search started. And the more I, the more I started digging into it and calling California, the more excited I got about it because it just looked like something that was so far out of the box. Why didn't you think of this?
As far as costs, well, two things. One, one, it goes to the school board next week for their discussion because they are obviously our partner in this. And when we're talking cost here, we're talking a couple hundred dollars for Jeff to go to this interview. We would have the expense of him going for the training and then basically food and vet bills. So our current K-9s run us about $1,000 a year, which has not cost the city a dime because it's been all fundraised money. Now, although there's been some discussion by some of the aldermen of potentially putting a line item for a few thousand dollars just to offset some of that because it's a cost of doing business. But we're not looking at huge dollars on this by any means. So we're not, we haven't gone to the school district to say, "Would you kick in $5,000?" because it's something that we're going to cover with our, with our current budget.
Well, I don't think you'll have any problem getting support on this. And one other question was somebody brought to me, what do you, every dog has its day and it has its bad days also. What happens if there is an incident?
Well, and that's going to be...
And the nicest dog sometime growls at somebody.
I'm sure, I'm hoping they're going to cover that in the training period. But the neat part about that organization is if I'm having difficulty, you know, they'll send somebody up to observe. They'll call me back down to work on it to make sure, you know, whatever's happening, we can train out of it, so to speak. And so having, having built that relationship, this is one of those things where the, um, you know, that once the trainer hands over the leash, they continue that relationship. I'll be having to do statistical reports and analysis for them to make sure that the dog is still being utilized. Or they'll just say, "If you're not going to use it, then we want it back and give it to someone else."
How long do you have to determine that? Because it could go on for a year or two. Is there a return policy for this? Because there's not a big resale for a $60,000 dog.
Yeah, they said they've been, they have taken dogs back, you know, five years into a program when... Because these are similar dogs that might help someone in a wheelchair with mobility issues and stuff like that. That's the training level. He'll, he'll know, he or she will know 60 commands before I even get a chance to meet with them. And so they'll just apply that to, you know, they have a waiting list that's huge.
And it's going to be trained for one specific officer?
It would be trained for one handler, yeah.
And how long is he going to be with us? And there's no guarantees here and...
Yeah, working life is, uh, eight to 10 years. I'm looking at 10 to 12 years of work. Unless that lottery ticket comes in, but I think I have to buy the ticket in order to win. And I always forget that.
We'll bump you up to 15, Jeff.
No more playing the lottery.
I, you know, I've been a police officer for 19 years. I've had a chance to be patrol. I've had a chance to do community partnerships and crime prevention, uh, honor guard, SWAT. Working with these young kids has, feels like the most important thing I've ever done. And that's, I guess, why I'm so passionate about this.
Starting the fundraising, I don't think you'll have any problem.
I suspect that won't be a challenge.
Alderman Penner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we touched on most of the warm fuzzy stuff. And the chief got into some of the dollar parts that I was going to ask questions about. And so he did answer several of those questions. So one, there's two questions we really haven't talked about. So I'm assuming like any other K-9, this will become a member of your family. Correct?
Correct.
The other question that I have is that it would seem to me that this is a job description change? And there, just like with a K-9, that there'd be a different dollar value applied to your job?
Yes and no. Under the contract, Jeff falls under, uh, the step pay that he has currently as a PSLO is the same as a K-9, so there's no additional compensation. The only difference that would be for us is obviously the dog and Jeff would be working the summer months together with us. together with us. So for the three months where he generally goes back down because he's not serving as a PSLO in the summer, he'd be compensated at the step six rate, the canine officer rate then for that.
And I would assume that, and we kind of touched on a little bit, but continuing the education between you and the dog, is that something that's a regular thing yearly or something to go down and make sure our training is still all in step and that, you know, because obviously the dog will probably be trained for a lot more than what you would probably use it for to maintain its...
I think what you're asking, again, I have to apologize, but you're asking about post-training?
Yeah, once you have the dog, I would assume that on a yearly basis, you would probably have to go and get some training with the dog or something for a period of time. And is that...
There is a mention of an annual post-training. And I don't know the details of that yet. And I suppose after they put you on the waiting list, they'll add more information. I've kind of... The back of the report was all of the financials that they had enclosed, you know, so that you saw the same thing that we saw in terms of the cost for the training and stuff.
So really, right now, we're going to confirm approval to go forward with the interview process at this time?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know in the back of my mind that you'd support the project if the interview went well as well.
I think that's pretty clear. It's just the details of it and that there really aren't surprises when it comes up. And thank you. For me, my questions have been answered. So thank you both very much.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make the motion to support the police department's application for a police elementary school canine facility dog.
We would also need, including the out-of-state travel.
Including the out-of-state travel.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I just wanted to add that I recently listened to a show on public radio. It was just before the holiday about these dogs being used in a school in San Diego and how effective it's been for the students, the teachers, and the families and the principals as well. So I support the idea wholly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, you bring so much to the table with your 19 years and working with you for a lot of those years in the community. I've always seen that you're a person that's always looking for innovation and different... Finding a better way is what my company has used for 20 years. And this is what it's all about, is finding a better way and innovation and addressing some issues. Certainly, I think we have much more ability to identify students, especially with mental health issues, let alone their physical health issues. And I'm sure these numbers are pretty reflective throughout all the communities here. A lot from public nurses and things that so many kids are on medication nowadays. And, you know, it's a good thing too because it helps keep their mental health where it should be. To ask a couple of questions, I appreciate your, all the information you gave us. And I know you're an overachiever, but I look at this sheet here with all the different things you would like this dog to do with hospital or traumatic situations or employees or juveniles. And how are you going to know the balances? And what are you thinking about the overtime issues? And as the budgets are a month, two months away, we always look at overtime as a big issue. And how do you see this all fitting into your daily activities with 1,800 kids?
Well, you haven't met Captain Holderson recently because he does a very good job balancing overtime. You know, there's creative ways. And, you know, sometimes it's working a little bit over here and then less over there. And I think that, you know, we're one of those departments that can find a way to get it in. And it's important work.
You know, I don't want to go too far out to other communities with this and stress our whole situation out either, you know. So when we make ourselves available, you know, it's got to be something within our control and not to overstress yourself or the dog. A couple of things about the dog. What one person may like, another person may fear. And you're looking at 1,883 kids, students. How do we know that some kid doesn't have a overwhelming irrational fear or something about that this monster dog is going to come in the classroom and, you know, to have... How are we going to go through these 1,800 kids to make sure that we don't have a situation like that, that some kid's living in fear because of this?
Well, my next stop next week is at the Manasha Joint School District Board of Education. And they're going to have to... They're going to take a look at their policies. And they're going to have to take a look at, you know, procedurally how they want to do things. It's no different really than a child that has a peanut allergy. You know, they make certain accommodations. We let the staff know, those kinds of things. And then you go from there. Many of the schools have mascots. Mascots don't always sit well with every student. Fortunately, in this position, I've got a chance to participate in a mascot role occasionally. And you get the feel for it real quick and you just kind of make your way away from that person or, you know, wait until there's an adult that's there to help support that child. And so I think, you know, a lot of it plays on body language. And those are going to be, you know, some of the growing pains with any new initiative.
Okay. And also, every school system in the country has a problem with head lice at times. Just a question. I don't know the answer to. Can dogs carry head lice or be transferred to them?
I'm not a veterinarian. I've been told through the school that head lice for pets is different than animals and they're not transferable.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to believe.
I was just looking at all the contact your dog would have and then put you in a situation like that too. Okay.
It's certainly not a souvenir I wanted to bring home.
Yes. I'm glad you're going to stay for more than 10 years. That looks good. Alderman Zelinski asked that. And... Are you assigned a permanent car? I mean, at this time, you take a car home every day?
I do not take the car home.
Okay.
I am assigned a car.
Okay. Okay. In this situation now, will you be... Will you be using the car to go home with or...
I don't know that that would be my decision. And I guess I'd let the chief speak to that.
Okay. I just didn't know if, when it said on here that you were assigned a car, I didn't know if that was, if you were taking it home at this time. That's fine. I don't need that answer. And I guess, Chief, the only concern out there is if overtime got out of hand or too much overtime through, you know, with this situation. I mean, I would love to see this dog at football games and maybe out on the field when the guys are practicing, you know, shagging a ball or something. So the whole community can pick up on it, things like that. But again, I know that comes at a cost too.
Certainly. And we look at opportunities and times that mesh with Officer Jorgensen's schedule that he'd be able to do that kind of thing, especially when you talk to summer months when kids are out of school or with the flux that they have a little bit with teacher days that they're off, that can afford the opportunity for other things. This is certainly something that I know Jeff would do it for free just because he's so passionate about it. And this isn't some sort of money-making mechanism for him. I... He's... I've known Jeff my whole career. And this is certainly something that he's very passionate about and doing it for what I think to be 100% the right reasons.
And I think it's always nice that everybody has something to take home. And if we would do like a baseball card or something of the dog and the stats or something on it, I think that would be a great thing that kids could take home with them and talk it up with the family too, so they know that this is involved. And I'm sure the council here would help raise funds for something like that. I know I would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I really like this. I think this is a great idea. Because to answer Alderman Zelinski's question, I worked in the school as a noon person. I watched the kids for... So the teachers can go eat for four years at Clovis. Every day then, every day. It's unbelievable. You know, the number of kids that are on meds, you know, and now today, they don't separate. They... I don't know if it is today, but back then, they did a little bit. I mean, the special needs kids did have a class with just them, but otherwise, they're integrated right into the regular classrooms. And I've seen, I've seen some bad stuff. And so I think this would be a great idea. My question is in the summertime during the three months, of course, this company knows that you're not going to be in school. What do you do in the three months and during the summer? Or do you go to summer school then? You know, I think they have summer school.
This year, I was afforded some opportunities to catch up with some of my students at the Boys and Girls Club. And since it was their beginning year, was able to spend some time there. So obviously, that would be a great spot as well. But there were other things. There's juvenile investigations. There's unfortunately, you know, we have to deal with sexual assaults of children and interviews at the Crisis Center and stuff. So there, I mean, there is always stuff that'll be available to do. It's just a matter of like what Chief Stike said, is maximizing the potential and seeing what fits best.
Okay. And the other one I asked, Alderman Taylor asked it. I think it'd be a great idea. And for this, I know Alderman might yell at me, but I'm not too concerned about the overtime. I think it'd be a great idea to get, for you and your canine to go out to football games, baseball games of the high schools and let the other, all the other people out there know, you know, what you guys are doing. I think that would just be fabulous. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to support the program and authorize the travel. Is there further discussion? Seeing done, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-0.
Thank you for your support. I hope we can meet again someday soon.
Don't you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, Jeff? Chief Stike, we have the other canine proposal.
We do. And the other officer should be up here shortly. Nah, I just texted. He's on his way. Basically, what I have in front of you, though, is Officer Miller, who'll be here in just a moment. He came to us from another agency.
Oh, there he is.
With his partner here, Apollo. As someone alluded to in some of the questions that had been brought up earlier, there's certainly the bond that exists between a canine officer and their dog itself. When Officer Miller ended up leaving the agency that he was with, it was just like our fundraising opportunities. The community itself had invested a fair amount of money into the animal. And when Officer Miller ended up leaving, he ended up paying the city back a large portion of the money out of his own pocket to maintain possession of Apollo. So he basically bought the dog back from the city. So when Officer Miller came to us, obviously, he had to go through his probationary period, which obviously has well since completed and has been on his own for quite some time now. He's certainly a very good officer. Comes with us with a lot of experience. Well, he's been hounding me, so to speak, no pun intended, about how can we get his dog back to work. He would absolutely love Apollo to come back to work for the city. And the biggest issue that we have is equipment and vehicles. So what we put together on this one, completely separate from Jeff's thing, is that Officer Miller has indicated an interest to go back out and fundraise enough for a vehicle and the equipment needed for that vehicle to put Apollo on patrol. Although he's incurred thousands of dollars that he bought Apollo for, he would be willing to sell the dog in essence. He'd need to do it for insurance purposes as a working dog. He'd sell the dog itself to the city for a dollar with the understanding that he'd buy the dog back for a dollar at the time that the dog would retire. So with that, I guess I open up to questions or if Officer Miller, if you wanted to say anything about it? I think I kind of covered it. Use that one if it's easier. Yeah, the estimate that we put on the sheet is fundraising of up to $70,000. That would include a brand-new vehicle and all equipment. Because in... Officer Miller's been working with Lieutenant Albrecht, who takes care of all the vehicles, trying to see if a vehicle that would be going out of our rotation would be enough to have enough life in it left that we could just get the equipment for that vehicle. So we're trying to see what options we may have, but that would be the maximum dollar amount that we'd be looking at needing if we started him off with a brand-new car and all-new equipment. Right? Okay.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I think we'd be foolish to pass this opportunity up. I mean, considering the cost of a canine, this is an excellent deal. We've got somebody with experience who's willing to bring this in. So I fully support this. What do we want? Make a motion? Do we want to recommend Officer Adam Miller be permitted to fundraise for a police vehicle, equipment, and wage differential for the purpose of having a canine Apollo join the Manasha Police Department? Is there a second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Is there a dollar amount on this, Mayor, for the community or for the budget?
This would all be fundraised and says a maximum of $70,000. So it'd be the cost of the car and the equipment, like the chief was saying.
So we would be on the hook for the price of the car?
For nothing. The police benevolent fund, I would guess. Correct?
I guess it was understood. We'd be on the hook... The city would be on the hook for what?
Well, it says here that the financial impact will be minimal to the city. Officer Miller has agreed to fundraise for the cost of the canine vehicle, equipment, and the differences in his wages, estimated to be maximum $70,000. So is there a point that the city, if we don't meet the fundraising?
No. No. The deal that Officer Miller and I have talked about, understanding that this is kind of above and beyond what the city has done in the past, he would not be allowed to start working with the dog until the vehicle was equipped and purchased with the fundraised money. The minimal cost that I do say is just the, again, if the city then buys the dog, we'd be responsible for the vet bills and the ongoing care of the animal. So you're looking at about $1,000 a year. Currently, that's always been fundraised for. So if that helps.
Yep, that helps tremendously. And Officer Miller, we had just talked to Officer Jorgensen about innovation and bringing new ideas to the table. And we certainly appreciate this innovative idea. And certainly, it's not something that we've dealt with before, but it's a fantastic idea. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you and Apollo keep training during this time?
I would keep up on what we can. Obviously, narcotics, we couldn't. Can't possess them. So once we do, if we do fundraising, go back to work, I spoke with our drug instructor. It's one day to recertify. And she just wants to see what I do. Work is to make sure she doesn't lost the touch. Talking to her, the dog will forget about her. It's just getting rid of bad habits that I may have. So the dog's okay.
I feel like Manasha's going to the dogs in a good way, though. Thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. This is one spot in the city where I support more dogs. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-0.
Thanks for coming up tonight, Adam. Okay, we'll go back up to the top again then. Item six is the ground lease agreement for the Broad Street parking lot as recommended by the planning commission. Attorney Captain, did you want to start out with this or Director Kyle? He's going to give it to you, it looks like.
As you're aware, we've been working on a ground lease arising out of the development agreement with Manasha Downtown Development LLC. I actually... I actually have, what was provided in your packet, let me say, was the most recent version that we received from Manasha Downtown Development. There were still some issues that we were in disagreement about. But realizing that we don't have this agreement in place yet, I thought it was important that you see where we're going. I think this is the second time that it's been on the agenda. So you're seeing multiple versions of the ground lease as we've been trying to work through the issues. What's different from the one that you were provided in your packet in the recital section There's a term that was added that this lease is not meant, nor does it amend any of the terms and conditions in the development agreement. That was something that I had recommended because there were frequent references to the development agreement that the developer kept putting into the ground lease, and I didn't want there to be a confusion between the terms of the development agreement and the terms of the ground lease. They are two separate agreements, and I, I wanted those separate. And so that term was added in article or section, let's see, this is article six, section 6.4. That was added, that the lessee shall keep and maintain the premises and improvements in good condition and repair during the term of this lease, reasonable wear and tear accepted. There really was nothing in the proposed lease relative to that. I had tried to add the language and they kept taking it out and we're going back and forth, and so now that is in there. There were provisions on the insurance, which is article eight, and the indemnification language, which is in section 11, 14, and 15. There were changes that were made to those two provisions. The insurance provisions that I had recommended, and I don't know if you recall, but the first version that you saw, the developer had absolutely no language regarding insurance. And so I had proposed this language, which is more or less standard that we received from CivMIC on what to include in indemnification and insurance requirements. What the developer came back with then was requiring it for both the themselves and us. You know, they wanted something to, if it's going to apply to them, it's going to apply to us. To a certain extent, one of the provisions that really, that can't apply to or should not apply to is the builder's risk. Because why should the city purchase builder's risk? We're not the one that is building the ramp. And so that is one of the changes from the version that you had in your packet, because that was taken out, the requirement that the city have or carry builder's risk. That isn't anything we would be doing. That's something that if they wanted, they should be doing. On the use of the premises, which is article nine, we kept with the language that was contained in the development agreement indicating that the lessee shall allow the ground level of the parking garage to be used as public parking outside of the tenant's normal business hours. And then I believe we had this discussion before, what are normal business hours? And we were able to modify that time. And you see it's 7:00 a.m., extending to 5:00 p.m. every weekday. In the version that you had in your packet, there was not a timeline if the lessee wanted to change the hours, modify those hours. And I had indicated that that really didn't seem fair if all of a sudden the hours were going to change, that we should have some kind of reasonable notice. I started out with a year, we ended up with six months. And so that is in there as well. And I talked briefly about the indemnification provision, provisions, and those are 1113 and 11.14. And it was expanded at my request because the only issue that it really dealt with was specifically a breach of contract. So it added some language to include other damages incurred arising out of the contract. And, let's see, in article five, what was removed was language about the industry standard, maintaining the structure up to industry standards. And the reason I asked for that to be removed is because it already is contained in the development agreement. The reason that we have it in the development agreement is because the developer will be turning the ownership of that parking garage to the city at the end of the term. And we wanted to ensure that it was being maintained according to industry standards, and that's relative to, you know, the surface and annual, having an annual inspection to make sure there aren't any cracks or any repairs to cracks are done, things like that. Ceiling, whatever is consistent with industry standards, that language is already contained in the development agreement. What I meant to include in the lease here, and that was the language that was added about keeping the premises and improvements in good, good condition and repair during the term of this lease, has to do with, you know, shoveling the snow, maintaining the lighting, those type of ordinary expenses and things that people would do if they were leasing Landscaping, I, well, if they have landscaping, they would be maintaining whatever is there, correct? And I guess I would defer because I'm not involved in the specific details of, of the site plan.
The development agreement did include provisions for landscaping, and it's part of that document, just as the landscaping was included in, for the Marina Place area.
There are still some additional provisions. If you notice on, I've got to find the provision here. In section 11.1, assignment. If you recall, the first proposed lease agreement that I had provided to the common council, there was some language in there about the ability of the lessee to mortgage. That was something that I had indicated to you we were trying to remove. We don't want a mortgage on a parking garage that eventually is going to come to the city and we, if all of a sudden there was a default or something, what, what good would that do us? We did not want any type of mortgage, particularly since the land underneath it is owned by the city. And so what the developer is proposing, and it was something that I had mentioned that we had done in other instances, was to allow a collateral assignment of the performance incentive payments that the developer is receiving under the development agreement. They ended up putting it in this lease agreement, and this is one of the provisions that I believe should not be in the lease agreement. It needs to be part of the development agreement. The receipt of the development incentive payments has nothing to do with the lease, with leasing the ground upon which the parking structure is going to be built. That's part of something arising out of the development agreement. So that is something that has been proposed to the developer, and we're waiting to hear back on that. Section 11.16 is a provision that I believe is absolutely necessary, that must be added. And that is the statutory protections and limitations clause. Because as, since we are a municipality, there are statutory protections and limits of liability that we have. As you're aware, there are certain indemnification and insurance provisions in here, and I don't want anything to get in the way of the city's ability to claim that we have statutory protections and we have limits of liability. As an example, there's a $50,000 limit liability for personal injury. Why would we waive that? We wouldn't waive that. We want to make sure that nobody's going to think that we're waiving that. And so I want a specific clause that's contained in this lease agreement that identifies that we are not waiving any of our statutory protections that are afforded to us, and we're not going to alter any of those statutory protections. And so that's what that clause is. And we are, this has been proposed to the developer recently because of the other language that they had added in here. So we wanted to counter that. And then finally, at one point, I did contact CivMIC. I wanted to make sure that the insurance coverage and indemnity provisions that were proposed are available to us. And so I guess what I'm asking for is if there's an inclination to approve this ground lease with the Manasha Downtown Development, that it should be subject to the additional changes that I'm proposing. And that is removing that collateral assignment language, adding the clause regarding the statutory protections and limitations that are afforded to municipalities, and then CivMIC indicating that there's insurance coverage and, or that the insurance coverage and indemnity proposed is available to us.
So you're looking for an approval with those three items?
Correct.
Does anyone have questions for the attorney or wish to make a motion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Did anybody, I, I never seen the ground level drawing yet. How many parking stalls are on the ground level versus the other two or three?
I, I don't know that without looking at the plan. We know there's 300 altogether. There's, yeah, there's probably going to be fewer.
On the ground level, is there two exits for cars or is there just one exit for cars?
I think there's just one.
Okay. And then at nighttime, there's, there's 300 parking stalls in there. Is the whole ground floor handicap parking? And what happens that time change? If we can only use it for handicap, what are the people? I don't know how many handicap stalls you have to have for a three-level, a 300-stall parking ramp. But is the whole ground floor going to be handicap?
Just not, I don't know.
Well, what's the percentage? I don't know what the...
For 300, so I, I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
But if we only have 40 on the ground floor, are they all going to be?
No, there, there's a lot more than 40 on the ground floor as well.
Well, what percentage do you use for handicap versus?
It, it, there's a, the code sets it based on certain classes, zero to eight and then eight to 20 or something like that. And without having that in front of me, I don't know what it is.
So I just want, don't want to limit ourselves on the ground floor that we can all use it for, I'm not against the handicap parking, but if it's all going to be handicapped, it's not, it's going to be kind of useless to some, a lot of like the taverns and stuff at night.
This is what we agreed to, and you can't have the handicap parking on the top level.
I know, but does it change, can we change it at, because we're only going to be using 50 stalls.
How are you going to do that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Can they, can they be changed if we're leasing just the ground floor? Can that percentage change at a different time?
Never heard of that happening, but that's not really what we're discussing. We, we're leasing the, the property back to the developers right now. We're not discussing about how it's put together, what it looks like, or any of those.
Yeah, we're going to be using the ground floor that's in this lease.
That was part of the original development agreement and the site plan approval.
I wish somebody would have seen the sketch or would have passed it on to the council at that point.
It was on the Plan Commission.
Well, it might have been a little...
I think the council got this.
I mean, if you look at McCone's lab, they, I, I think...
Do you know what? They have about 70 stalls over there, I think.
And there's probably like six handicap.
I, I don't know what the percentage is for a 300-stall parking ramp, but that's going to be one structure. And they're all going to be on the bottom floor. I don't know if they're going to take 10, 20, 30.
Right, you gotta watch.
Yeah, there's a percentage, and I don't think it wanders out beyond that parking ramp for the handicap stalls.
So, we, we can't answer that question, Dan, tonight, I don't think, but...
But it should be answered, because if it's going to render it useless for the tavern, the taverns are still going to have handicap people, but maybe not the majority of them. And if there, if there's not enough parking, they're going to use up all the other parking, and everybody's going to be complaining at some point. It's good that there's a shortage of parking, but sometimes there's not enough. We had this discussion many a times, though, here in the last two months.
Then we, then we would need to change the development agreement at this.
And I don't know if that can be changed on a time basis for when we just leased it down to the bottom floor.
Hey, so it's not something that's on the agenda, though, here? Did you want to say something?
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that the terms that are in this ground lease are terms that are already agreed to in the development agreement. The common council already approved the development agreement, which indicated that the developer would make available for public use the ground level during non-business hours. The only thing that we're defining here is what does it mean by non-business hours? That was not specifically defined in the development agreement. But the use for public park, parking in the, on the ground level, that was already contained in the development agreement. And the development agreement would have to be changed in order to change that.
So at this point, I guess, right, we're just agreeing on how many, just a handful of items, because we already agreed for it?
That's correct.
And those are the underlying items?
The stuff like the insurance and the indemnification, the times of the, what's normal business hours? Not many things, and a lot of the other... Not many things. And a lot of the other stuff is just stuff that, as the legal counsel, I would normally include in a lease agreement, indicating that whoever is leasing the property must comply with all laws. If there are any hazardous substances that are stored, et cetera, they need to be stored in accordance with the law. They have to provide us a copy of the data sheets that pertain to that. They're responsible for keeping the premises in good condition. Those general things that you would see in a lease. They're responsible for the utilities. If all of a sudden they did not pay the utilities, and the landlord, so to speak, had to pay the utilities, then we would, then they would owe us that as additional rent. The rent was already agreed to in the development agreement at a dollar per year. The term is already agreed to in the development agreement, length, length of the lease.
So they've already seen this? Which ones did they bulk it?
The three things that I just mentioned.
Okay.
Were the, are the three new things.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
From the original July 7th agreement, is there any more of our property involved in this ground lease than there was in July?
The size? No.
Same square footage. Alderman Zalinski brings up a good point, and maybe we have to have, put this on the agenda and talk this out a little more. If the bottom floor is, let's say, 60%, 80% handicap, that doesn't give the community much to use, you know, for events or for the nighttime hours. Alderman Benner brought up early on something about the video monitoring of it, so we had less police involvement with it. That hasn't been answered yet, so I think we should, we could revisit something like that, too. Greg, this is probably for you. Since we own the property, and we could have some contaminants, surface contaminants coming off. Other properties, flat surface, have the drainage or the retention ponds. How does this particular property handle the runoff coming off, the cars that are in there thawing out, draining?
Well, it's handled in the same way as the current runoff from the parking lot is dealt with. We do have, we do have an ordinance that specifically speaks to something called illicit discharge. So if there was a spill or something like that, we have the ability to address that both through our local ordinances. Plus, there's, you know, like emergency response if it's deemed to be a hazardous.
Well, I guess what I'm looking at is, the DNR looks at kind of a time period that you have a flat surface parking lot, each car drips oil, it rains out, that oil runs off. And I'm wondering how the DNR looks at a structure like this with that runoff from different fluids from the vehicles. And, you know, do those go down into a drain? Or is there a retention pond somewhere on the property?
There is no treatment provided for the runoff from the Broad Street parking lot, and there will not be from the parking structure either.
And I guess something else that needs to be addressed to, from a community development standpoint, is there any state or what provisions are available for the negative input of properties because of a ground lease of this nature with a parking ramp to the adjacent properties? So I think there's multiple questions here, I think, that have come out since the agreement was signed. But I think we should kind of look at all of these. They all have merit to them. And certainly, everything was so condensed at that time. And that's why I would like to see a lot of this vetted out before an agreement is signed, and not just at the 11th hour, because these questions come up, and then we say, "Well, you signed it, and that's the way it is." So these 12, 13, 14 heads up here, and department heads at that table, it's, the more people you involve, the better off the end product is. And certainly, by hearing these different questions that need to be addressed, I think we should have revisit this, and not tonight in the ground lease. So I think, may or these different questions should be put into some sort of a format that we could talk about. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Captain, I was kind of wondering about our definition of normal business hours. Because it just says 7:00 AM, 5:00 PM on every weekday. And what if we have holidays? I mean, if we aren't, really aren't defining weekday, we assume it's Monday through Friday. And then if we have a holiday that lands in there, if we have parades, festivals, things like that downtown, that be able to park in there? Because it just says 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on every weekday. Should we have some language in there discussing holidays, possibly?
We can ask them.
It just seems like those are the days that I think I'm most concerned with, for us to really being able to park down there and utilize that space. And if it lands on weekday, then we may have some problems if they decide, if they would decide to go there. I wouldn't imagine they would, but the language shouldn't hurt, in my opinion. And then with the, under insurance, under Article 8, it just says that it has, that they have to maintain it in effect at all times during the term. And so, have we decided the time? I'm assuming this ramp will probably be done before, before the building is done? Have we decided when that term is? Because what I've seen a lot of times is, and I'm not, again, implying that this could happen here, but a lot of times folks will build a building, they'll take out, they'll have the contractor get the builder's insurance, and then they leave that on until it runs its full, its full term that they paid for their insurance, in lieu of putting the additional insurance on that that you're asking for at this point, so they would only have the contractor's insurance on it. And I was wondering if, about clarifying the times of the term and when we'd be allowed to use that. Because I envision them getting that done sooner, and then maybe using it for parking for construction, which I'm not opposed to. But I'm just wondering when that, when that time would begin that we could start parking in that. It just seems to me that there is some gray area in there from what, from the time that they get it done, and when we're going to be allowed to utilize it, and when that insurance would be in effect.
The term is the term of the lease. So for the entire term of the lease, the insurance requirement would be effective.
Do we know when the lease is going to begin? Is that part of the development agreement, or?
It's in the July 7th of this year.
July 7th.
Of this year.
We're already late.
So there you go. So I think we should maybe clarify that a little bit.
Clarify that.
Unless I have it already, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, the lease agreement that the term starts on July 7th.
And so they would have this insurance as soon as this agreement is signed?
Correct.
Plus maintain the builder's risk insurance.
And I would venture to guess that they already have that.
I would think so. But I would, I would think that they would struggle with having to provide insurance for this requirement, and still have builder's insurance at the same time. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know that much about it, but it's just, my experience is that those are two different things. Obviously, we added a line item for it.
Well, they're two different things, yeah. Two different types of insurance. And there's several types of insurance that are required here, so...
Maybe I'm confused about what, what the difference, I know, I think I know what the difference is between the two, but...
Well, builder's risk during the time of construction until you have the building. It really protects the builder in the event that something catastrophic happens and, I don't know, a tornado or something like that takes it down.
Right. I understand that, but then the other insurance, what the workman's comp, the commercial general liability, all the other stuff there, it's mentioned in A through, A through 2D. That's for us, correct? Protect us.
Yes, that would be liability. Slip and fall.
And does that include, and so that would include the construction? During time of construction, this insurance would protect us from, because during time of construction, it's a construction site.
Well, they'll have general liability on the premises, the entire premises that's being leased. So the liability insurance would be coverage for the leased premises. And then, once the building is completed, you know, if something, that building is still on the premises.
Correct, yeah. But isn't that what this insurance is for, is from the time that we would actually start using the facility? Or not? Is this just a general insurance?
You mean for us you're talking?
Yes, yes.
Oh, for us, once we start using it, correct?
Yeah, so do they really need this up until the point that we start using the ramp?
Well, you're asking about, okay, I'm, I wonder why I'm confused. These requirements go both ways, so what I was, the questions I was answering had to do with when they are required to have this coverage.
Correct.
It doesn't make any difference for, we wouldn't need any of this coverage until we start using it. That is correct.
Yeah, that's my point, so...
That is correct.
Wouldn't it? So, so what I was getting out of it, that if they at least started on July 1 of this year, then they're required to provide this insurance, and it's really for no reason, because we're not using the ramp until it's complete.
Our insurance requirements under the terms of the lease have to do with public use of the ground floor of the parking ramp. So until there is a ground floor that is being used for public use, we don't have any requirement to have the insurance.
Correct. That's, that's where I was going with it.
Yep.
So this, this upper level insurance really wouldn't be required until that date happens.
Until there's public use, correct?
Right, yeah.
Of the ground floor, yes.
So, but by this, they'd be required, by the language of this contract, they'd be required to have that insurance at the time that they agreed to this, to this agreement. And it really wouldn't be required until we start using it.
We are required to have coverage for the public use.
But we're not using it until we're done with it.
They are required to have insurance on the whole premises. I'm not understanding, I guess, the question.
This contract is for us, for our utilization of that parking facility, correct?
No, this contract is for their use of the public ground.
Okay, so during construction, would this portion of the insurance be applicable while they're building the structure?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm done with that. You can applaud now. That was all my questions.
Oh, okay.
So... So we have two options. The preferred option is to approve it with the changes that the attorney recommended. We can wait till the next council meeting as well, but at that point, we really don't have an agreement to allow them to be on our property and to have them have those insurances if something does happen. So it's preferred that we get some sort of an agreement as soon as possible. That's something the council can make their decision on, though, tonight. If they want to make the motion to approve it with those changes, or if they want to wait. Looks like, Kevin?
Just going back on one more question. Did we agree that we were going to clarify the hours, the week, the normal business hours? We agreed that we were going to...
Including holidays.
Yes, okay. And I'm still open.
So it appears the council wants to wait until it's finished? Is that what I'm seeing? Okay. We'll move on. Item 8 is the SunGuard HTE Accounting Software 5-Year Renewal.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the SunGuard HTE Accounting Software 5-Year Renewal.
There's a motion. A second? Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item 9 is the approval of a 3-year plan to implement replacement of high-pressure sodium streetlights with LED streetlights. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the 3-year plan to implement replacement of HBS street lighting with LED street lighting.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
I'd just like to add that Manash Utilities and WPPI really put in a lot of effort to put this plan together and to get us incentives from both Focus and WPPI, which made this all have an incredible payback, and we're saving over $700,000 over the life of these lights. We'll keep moving. Item 10 is the request to approve Todd Drew's attendance at the Integrated Foodborne Outbreak Environmental Health Association. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the request to approve Todd Drew, RRS Environmental attendance at the Integrated Foodborne Outbreak.
Is there a second? There's a motion. A second? Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is Ordinance 15, amending parking, nickelable, no parking zones on nickelable alert. Is there a motion to approve? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, zero dash 15, dash 15, and Ordinance pending Title 10, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances, Parking Regulations Recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion. A second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is Resolution 31, acknowledging the review of the City of Manasha 2014 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve R-31-15, a resolution acknowledging the review of the City of Manasha 2014 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report under the Wisconsin Administration Code NR208, introduced by Alderman Ralph Kramer, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion. A second? Is there discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call 7-0.
Okay, and I think I got all the items today, did I? Okay. Okay. I want to make sure that we didn't skip anything. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. We've lost everyone but one person. Did he want to make a comment? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.